Benjamin and Barnes.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
We're going to say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Mayor Proton Muriki Goncelan?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot?
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard?
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter?
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask you to put your phones on silent or vibrate, and we're going to the public comment. You have three minutes, and there's no back and forth. We just listen. Madam Clerk?
Benjamin Myers for items four A and five A.
And on the CLECO, we also have public comment, so you can either talk now, or you can talk during the public comment, but not twice.
Really?
Yeah. Is that fair, Jeff? Can I do that? Or do they get to talk twice? I mean, I want to do what's right, but I want to ask.
They probably ought to talk twice.
Okay, well, then I'm done with that. You can talk twice.
I hate to say that.
No, it's okay. All right. I just needed to know, because sometimes we have asked people in the past, do you want to talk now or public comment?
Right.
But I know this is, you know, an important issue, so.
We've always, yeah, we've always asked.
So we do it twice?
Yeah.
We'll do it twice.
All right, let me, let me.
Sorry, I interrupted you, sir.
No problem.
But we do, we do have, public comment is thirty minutes.
What?
Public comment is total of thirty minutes.
Oh, the total of public, I didn't, okay, all right.
And, and three minutes is the usual.
No, we, we only have, how many comic cards do we have?
Two.
Oh, we just have two. It shouldn't take thirty minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, let me bring this to your attention. The form that I fill out to speak right now, I also listed three A.
Oh, three A, I'm sorry.
And three, I don't know.
Is on, mic's on?
I don't know. You want to make sure it's on? Somebody know?
It's on?
It's on.
Are we districting?
Yeah.
All right, that's better?
He's just tall.
That's better? Yes. Now, again, I want to bring your attention, and I want to address three A.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, we have this drawing of our district, the redrawn of our district lines, and I don't agree with the drawing of particularly District Two and District Five, because the law specifically states that comp, I'm sorry, the minority districts should be drawn compact, not contiguous. For example, District Two is contiguous. District Two is a straight line from Admiral Dahl all the way up to Jane Street, all right? That's not compact. That's contiguous, all right? So that, those lines are drawn improperly, all right? So I don't vote, I mean, I don't think that you guys should accept this drawing as our final drawing when it comes down to drawing our lines, when it comes down to our districts, all right? Now, let me get right on to the CLECO contract. Now, again, we're right now in a position, unusual position, but we have to make a decision right at this point whether or not we want to continue to do business with CLECO under a twenty-year extension, or twenty-five-year extension. I propose, and a lot of people I've spoken with throughout the city, everybody's district, all right? The poor folks, the folks on fixed income in your districts, all are asking that you all support no more than ten years for an extension on this deal with CLECO, all right? Give us time to work through things and not make us enslaved to CLECO for twenty-five years, all right? We don't know whether or not we'll be able to get those rates reduced by going before the Public Service Commission in the future, but we certainly don't want to continue on for twenty-five years under the circumstances that we are having to deal with right now, all right? CLECO has not addressed those things. When you guys talking about the lights that's out all over town, I rode to town last week, I can count you one hundred and fifty lights. I stopped at a hundred and fifty, all right? In everybody's district, your district, Mr. Broussard, Iberia Street, on the corner of Iberia Street where the Hardee's was, and Dar Walton Street, they got three lights spread out, and I can go on and on, but that's just a waste of time. The point is, we do not need to go anywhere beyond the ten years. This is what the public is asking all of you all, and they're asking you all, your district members, support them, fight for them, all right? I was, I went to Little Brooklyn and talked to some of those folks that you've been talking to, Dustin, and they made it very clear, please speak for us, ask Dustin to support this ten-year thing. Don't punish us with a twenty-five-year contract or extension. You know, in other words, they can't afford it right now. They're struggling right now. All of these people on fixed incomes, all right, the poor folks, low income, they can't afford this, all right? Some of us who pushing for this, well, we might be better well off to take care of these. They got a mayor who earns a hundred and something thousand dollars a year, he can pay his bill. We, we can't pay our bills, you know, we're suffering. You know what I'm saying? The people are really suffering, and they're asking you all, the district members, all right, of your district, to keep fighting for them. Don't give up. Winners never quit, quitters never win, all right? For those of us who have faith in the Lord, continue fighting. For those of us who don't have such a faith, please, recognize what you're doing. Recognize what you're doing. I don't know why you're doing it. I don't know if it's a bias party thing, I don't know if it's a race thing, I don't know why, but I know one thing, the folks that I spoke with, black and white, by the way, feel that pain, all right? And they don't want to go for twenty-five years. It's like giving them a twenty-five-year sentence. They can't do anything about it. Again, ten years, this is what everybody's asking for. Again, we have also given extension one time for five years, after the last contract was negotiated way back in two thousand. All of a sudden, we got this miraculous extension for five years, right? So you can't tell me that, you know, we can't work with a ten-year extension on this. And we got to make it clear, these last two years that we have on this contract right now, are we going to, ten years beyond that? Is that two years included in that ten-year extension? We really need to make that clear as well when we do talk terms of the ten years. Please, I pray, I pray to God that all of you all support this, all right? Thank you, love you people, you want to fight for you people, and this is the time. Ten years, you guys, please, I hope that you all come to terms with that. If this twenty-five-year thing is the only thing voted on, please, vote against it until we can get the documentation to read, respect for what we think we need and what we like to have, which it would be no more than a ten-year agreement. Trust me, I am not the only person. I happen to be the one who's speaking, but there's a broad range. Everybody know, you already declared it's, what, forty percent of our citizens are low income or below the poverty level, you know? That's ridiculous to think that they can continue to pay these bills. Look at our poor seniors right now. They're suffering, trying to pay for their medication with CLECO. And hell, look at our hospital. The hospital right now had to readjust their budget, you understand, to accommodate CLECO. That's taking away from medical supplies that we can use as far as for the benefit of our health. So we can't just stand by and let CLECO toy us like we not educated, unintelligent, or not wise enough to see, you know, what's going on here. This standard that they called it for twenty-five years, that's old. You want to throw away something that's old, that should have been thrown away a long time ago. Again, ten years, people. This is all ten years. This is all they're asking for. Let them have those ten years, we can work through this thing with CLECO in the next ten years, and hopefully it can fix some of these license problems that we already have. So we don't need them twenty-five years right here, right now. We don't need that. But again, make sure that you determine whether or not these two years that we have left on this contract would be before this ten-year extension, all right? Just clarify that as far as one or two years for all. But again, ten years. I pray that you all agree with us and support us and keep fighting. Again, winners never quit, quitters never win. Keep fighting, y'all. We all in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Gotrow for item number four A.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening.
I would like to preface my remarks with a general comment. The franchise agreement currently under consideration has as much value, if not greater value, in terms of dollars to CLECO. Presently, CLECO has only two years of a guaranteed stream of revenue from New Iberia. With a new agreement, CLECO shall have a guaranteed stream of income for twenty-five years from the city, one of the two largest customers of CLECO. This one franchise is of significant financial value as a business to CLECO. I would like to specifically speak, or more specifically speak, about street lighting. It has been stated that the city utility cost for street lighting is substantial and burdensome. The amount has been cited as at least six hundred thousand dollars every year. CLECO has declared that it voluntarily replaces existing streetlights with LEDs as they go out at their expense, and rightly so. They own the infrastructure. I would emphasize voluntary and it being a slow process. In addition, voluntary, that policy could be terminated at any time. There is no guarantee that all streetlights would be LED within the next twenty-five years. At the same time, some council members have suggested, in addition to the contract, whereby CLECO would be required to change all streetlights to LED within the first five years of the contract. If there is such a requirement, CLECO would change out the LEDs twenty-five, twenty percent each year of the first five years. At the end of five years, all streetlights would be LED. And the results to city residents would be, first, better, brighter lighting, meaning a safer environment. And secondly, add a significant savings to the city. With LED lighting, electrical consumption would be less, and the cost to the city would be less. How much less, you ask? The cost would be at least a savings of no less than fifty percent. In terms of savings, let's talk dollars. At the end of the first year, the savings would begin, one hundred twenty thousand dollars. In the sixth year, substantial savings are three hundred dollars for the year and three hundred thousand dollars every year thereafter. By the end of the fifteenth year, the city will have saved three million dollars. At the end of the contract, the city will have saved six million dollars. Yes, indeed, a non-negotiable condition in the contract should be a mandate for CLECO to convert all city street lighting to LED within five years. With LED lighting, city, city residents will be safer with better lighting and at a significant cost savings. Let's not forget, city residents have an expectation of the city being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, two A.
Acceptance of the minutes of January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, which will publish on February eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Proton Muriki Goncelan. Is there any discussion on our minutes of January seventeen? Hearing none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item three A.
Redistricting update by Cedric Floyd, President Data Center LLC.
Good evening, sir. I know. That's all good.
I've always kept somebody all the time, so you'll always catch me.
I know, man.
Always, always, always.
You always bring paper with you.
Thank you, sir.
Perhaps the one that he sent, the most recent one.
Is that this one?
I think so.
If it's the same one, pull it up. If it's not the same one, don't put it up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
It's always a pleasure. Before you is the map that we worked on on March the twenty-ninth, okay? Every ten years after the United States Census, the city of New Iberia must examine its election districts for population equality. That's known as one person, one vote. Data Center provided a bench, the benchmark plan, which is your current plan with the ninth, with the twenty-twenty census applied to it. And it gave a deviation of twenty-six point five six percent, which was two times more than the legal limit of ten percent. So we met on March the twenty-ninth to comply with state and federal law. The first thing, I guess I want to cover is that for the city of New Iberia, there may be four different maps. For the city of New Iberia, that all could be considered legal. First of all, is the United States Census map that they regulate deadlines and timetables to be part of its census program. So if, in fact, that city leaders in two thousand didn't send the information in on time for the twenty, twenty-ten census, and then you didn't send enough the information for the twenty-twenty census, you might have, I say, in, on local terms, out of date, street names, bayous or so, but the Census Bureau adhere to their deadlines and have to gather information from around the country, go forward with it, just like the Census Day is April first, two thousand twenty of the Census year. If somebody was born April second, or somebody died April second, it'd get counted in the next census. So if, in fact, that the city annex something after the due date, if you change a street name after the due date, well, the Census data and the mapping system and the name is reflected on that database. So that's one database. When it comes down to the state, it may have a database with a different timetable, but if they didn't ship their stuff up to the Census Bureau, it's not going to be part of the Census database, which is the official database for the United States. This is how funded get, and this is how redistricted, because anybody in Washington, D.C., in a congressional office, state office, could plug in for the city of New Iberia for every street, every person, is going to be reflected of the United States Census database. So if you have done something with the city, they don't regulate what you do. You could name a street anytime you want to, you could name a bayou differently, but if you didn't meet their deadline, it's not going to be part of it. And what we do is this, and I got thirty-plus clients, we've been doing this for forty-three years. It's a button on my system that I press that says meets and bounds, and it draws all the lines for every district. We do not go through each layer to say it, and this is what the state uses, this is what the Justice Department uses, meets and bounds. So that day, on March the twenty-ninth, when we finished that, I could have pressed a button, and you're going to see it. And it may conflict with what you have done since that deadline, but what happens is, it'll go toward the next census if, in fact, you turn that information. So the city may have, over the years, changed names, changed bayous, but if you didn't go up the flagpole to the parish, to the state, and then to the Census Bureau on time, it's not going to be reflected on the twenty-twenty census database and map. And that's what, that's what I use, and that's uniform, and that is the law, and I don't know in forty-three years that any city, parish, have been able to overturn the database from the United States Census, even throughout the state. My wife and I, we were just in Manny this morning at ten o'clock, Streetport, sort of last night. It's been an undercount of people throughout because of COVID, and people kind of scared to answer the census. It's an undercount. So, but you have to live with it, because everybody, uniformity about it, but your census information is available to everybody in the United States based on the United States Census database. And that's what we redistricted on with that. With that, it found the benchmark plan is your current plan with the twenty-twenty census applied to. Your city had a population of twenty-eight thousand five five five. District one had a population of five thousand three oh eight, District two, four thousand forty-four, District three, four thousand five twenty-four, that's on your paper. District four, five thousand one seventy-nine, District five, four thousand five sixteen, and District six, four thousand nine eighty-four. And when you add the, the smallest district, the census deviation, to the largest one, it gives you what the planned deviation is. So eleven point five four is the plus, and the negative, the smallest district is two, fifteen point oh two. If you add those two numbers together, that's how you get the twenty-six point five six. The extreme is a mathematical term, and you have to be within ten percent. So with that, we, on March twenty-ninth, adjusted the lines to be within ten percent deviation. I was very pleased. It took, Mayor, it took us about three hours, but we got it done. Okay, so as a result, let me just, I guess, address what the gentleman had said. District four was the smallest district that had to add population, and that's what we did. And the potency, I mean, District two, District two, excuse me, and the potency of the district is there, because it was seventy-eight point five four, and now it's seventy-four, seventy-four point five two. It's a solid black majority district. And what we did to add population to District two, we added a total of six hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty-eight people, two hundred thirty-six whites, and three twenty-eight black. And I would, I just want to go through each variation, because this is, I guess, my presentation as part of the public hearing. The overlay is the addition to your present district. District two had to add people, so it added above. Because adding above, you already had District four at fifty-one point one six, and you had District five at sixty-nine, sixty-nine percent. So we added those people above it, right above it. This is one city, and compactness is in the eye of the beholder. What happened is, over the last thirty years, what the, what the U.S. Supreme Court called not compact is when you had a district in, in North Carolina that went about fifty miles along the I-ten corridor. So you wouldn't consider it, but if you add census blocks right on top of each other in the same city, it's compact. You know, you got the same city. You know, you didn't go to the next parish or the next city or so. This district is as compact as it could be, because it sits right on top of it. And you did not lose the effectiveness of District two, because it's seventy-five percent when you finish. So, you know, we had to ask population, by federal law, the plan had to be within ten percent, and it complies. And my company, this is our fifth census. We worked in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, two thousand, twenty-ten, and two thousand twenty. We've worked with probably four different Secretary of States. We've done work in the parish of Iberia since the nineteen eighties. My company did the sub-districts for the sixteen JDC. Also, we redistricted the parish council and the school board in nineteen ninety census. So we understand and know the parish of New Iberia, I mean, of Iberia, and the, and the city of New Iberia. So what's before you, there's least changes possible to comply with federal and state law. And of course, if, in fact, the city of New Iberia has renamed streets, renamed bayous, waterways, but if the Census Bureau was not updated with the information, well, my mapping system that comes directly from the Census Bureau is only going to pick up related to that database. And what happened is this, I've worked in cities that the engineering department or independent engineer, the city has commissioned that and just used the correct lines with the new updates. But the dist is frozen the names of the annexation, because annexations happen. Nobody could stop, the Census Bureau does not regulate annexations. But what happened is, if an annexation happens after this, the voters tend to go to the nearest district. And that's what happens, annexations, all the time. You annex, you change the name of streets, but if, in fact, if it doesn't meet the deadline for the Census Bureau, you make sure it's carryover to the next one. But you could have a local map with your most current identifications, landmarks, streets, or whatever you name. They don't do that. And all they're saying is that, at some point in time, years before the census, as they have to do this for every street in the United States, every population, you have to comply with the, with the deadline, and they move forward, given it might be dated data, because it's April first, two thousand twenty, for the count. And you, like, on the second, you have people died in New Iberia, you had people born in New Iberia. It doesn't count until the, till the twenty-third census, just like when it comes down to annexations and renaming of streets and waterways. But what happens is this, when, 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 when I redistrict, you send something off called a shape file, and the shape file is this. You don't have, you don't send streets, you don't send population, and I colored the shape file, but it's, it really is the, the outer ring of your districts. And what happened is, the state, the federal government, the courts, the, the information fills in from the Census Bureau, the streets and everything. So when it comes, if you look at state law, eighteen, nineteen, forty-five, it requires you to send the shape file. And some cities have street descriptions in the Code of Ordinances, many do not. So you do ordinance, just say, attach is the shape files, the population summary, and you send that, and that's enough. Or you could visibly see that, send a map to, to the registered voters, and they fill in the information. And what we do is that, we work hand in hand with the Secretary of State and with the registered voters to implement your plan. And we've done that successfully this our fifth census, and we have implemented twenty-five plans on the twenty-twenty census without a hiccup. When it comes down to this, exactly what you worked on March twenty-ninth, exactly what you see there will be implemented as soon as this ordinance is dropped. Yes, sir, but let me just say this again. Streets have been renamed, I think, to bayou or whatever, but what we do is that, we just press a button as part of the program in the system to the meets and bounds, the description. Okay, so I just wanted to answer that, because that was some concern or whatever, you know, that we don't go with different layers and say this back and forth. It's part, just like the, the numbers, you have some blocks that might be zero, and people have moved there since April first, two thousand twenty. It's frozen. Just, just wanted to explain it. It's frozen, because what happened is, everybody in the United States is on the same page on April first, two thousand twenty, and then it takes eight months to compile information and get it to the president's desk at December thirty-first of the census year, and that's what's going on. Just wanted to explain to you in terms of, I, I may not have the same street names or the bayou name, only because I'm just using what the Census databases has done. And, but that doesn't stop you from commissioning another map, updating information, just make sure that your lines are there as you go forward. And, and, and I'll work with you with that, but I would just let you know, from a legal standpoint, we work with the census data and the map that's sent with the data, okay? And, and like I said, these districts comply with federal and state law, and I stand behind that, any challenge or whatever, back and forth. But District two had to add population, and what we added, population directly north of it. And like I said, we added six hundred and fifty-eight people to comply, two thirty-six whites, three twenty-eight black, and just, except for five percent. That's a, that's a potent black majority district, the highest in the, in the city. So it was no dilution, it's no, it was, it was a way to have all six districts complying with state and federal law, and, and we all worked together to get it done, right, mister? It took a while for us to get there, but we, we worked, you know, because, let me just tell you this, so it's always fun for me, I was, like I said, I was in Manny this morning at ten o'clock up in Sabine Parish. It's always fun, because people have like a little, little, when I say think it could be a certain way, and it's never that easy. certain way, and it's never that easy all the time. Yes, sir. But anyway, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity, but I wanted to explain everything because you do have a public hearing on this issue. But like I said, that's the map. This is exactly what you approved on March twenty-ninth. And like I said, if in fact that you have new names for streets, another name for bayous, let's work toward getting, you know, getting updated, but this is the census information as dictated by the United States Census Bureau. Thank you very much, Ian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move directly into four A. Let's hang on, unless anybody would have any questions I need to ask. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Floyd?
Freddy, district two came up so much, I got to say something. We worked on it hard, and we really had a good time doing it, and I learned a lot because that was my first ever, and, you know, may never do another one. But I like what happened in district two because I see a little more diversity, believe it or not. I see the numbers we need to stay minority, but I also see a little diversity, you know, and we always talk about diversity in this country, and diversity, I believe, in all areas of our business, this was going to make the difference going forward. So thank you for your work, and my counsel, thank y'all because we worked on this together.
We did, it was fun. It was a lot of work.
Lots of fun.
You can have them, you can have them. It's all ours. Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Mr. Floyd and Laney for working on those descriptions.
Yep, yep, because we actually have, let you finish, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because they're very confusing, you know, just weaving in and out of here and there. And, you know, we're trying to match the census data to things we understand.
Yes, sir.
Which is, which is the challenge. But I know Laney's worked hard on that and worked with Mr. Floyd to get all that to match up so that it'll make sense to us when we want to know who's where and make sense to the registrar.
And what we do is that, until the register of voters' work is done, we work with the registrar.
Right.
Okay? To get it done. We are representatives, and it's going to be exactly what you adopted, what you did, and we look forward to the implementation, y'all having elections on it.
Good. And Laney's work.
Yep, thank you, Laney.
I watched her, and she did a lot of work on it. And that's going to help us too because we are going to get, we are going to hire an engineering firm and do new city maps. Because it's changed, I want everybody to know exactly what our districts are. So the next step after this is that I'm going to hire an engineering firm that does maps, that has traditionally done our maps, and get a new map made. So we will have new maps, and that way, everybody knows exactly where. And then it relates local with the map, with street names and, you know.
And Mayor, make sure you set it up the flagpole, and it's going to be there, you know, because.
I will, I would like to get it right.
Yeah, for the twenty-thirty census, every time you do something up until that deadline, you need to do it. So maybe it wasn't done with previous administrations.
Well, I will rely on you to make sure we hit all the targets.
Right, right.
Thank you for bringing that up because I want to get it as good as we can.
Yes.
Good. Anybody else?
Thank you for making it so smooth. Some parish had trouble, I mean, some other places have a lot more trouble than we had, but thank you again.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good. Well, then now we can move on to Madam Clerk, Forey.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-six, an ordinance to amend and extend for a period of twenty-five years until December sixth, twenty-fifty. Ordinance number two thousand dash five eighty, adopted November eighth, two thousand, which ordinance granted a franchise to Clico Power LLC, formerly Clico Utility Group Incorporated, its successors, and assigns for the construction, maintenance, and operation of electric utilities, electric generating facilities, and/or transmission and distribution systems in, through, and across the city of New Iberia, Louisiana municipality, and for the use of the streets, alleys, and public places of said municipality in connection therewith for the generation, transmission, distribution, and sale of electric current, energy, and/or power, and to modify the terms of said franchise granted in ordinance number two thousand dash five eighty as here and after set forth.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any public comment on this item?
Brian Gootrow again.
Yes, sir.
And I say to you, let's hold Clico to a high standard, and in the case of street lighting, take the city of New Iberia to a higher standard to the twenty-fourth, twenty-first century. Clico has the financial wherewithal to accomplish this mandate. After all, it's offering one million five hundred thousand dollars to the city to sign on early. Once again, I ask for the change of street lighting to LED as a requirement of Clico in the approval of the franchise agreement for a safer environment and significant savings to the city. City residents have entrusted you, the mayor and the council members, with their taxpayer dollars by negotiating a contract that will create this kind of savings and resolve some of the crime deterrent issues from better lighting. The mayor and the council will be serving the citizens better and fulfilling your oath of office. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say this much. I've spoke to people in every one of your districts. I went down Dasby Road, Texaco Street, Pole Street, that trailer park on Dasby, went in Black Manila, Walton Street, went in Little Brooklyn. Oh, the majority of these black folks over there, for the most part, retired educators are living on fixed income, and they're hurting, they're hurting bad because of Clico. And the reason I asked for the ten years is because they're asking that they don't see the rest of their lives suffering at the hands of Clico. Because our council people who represent those districts didn't support and fight for them where they can get better and do better. Now, you take that into account. We have already given extension of five years before. We just gave a contract to Pelican for ten years. We're always talking about do things new. This twenty-five year, that's adequate, all right? We also need to address some of those things later when it comes down to our franchise agreements in our charter, which I think that we should address when it comes down to this, where we can have our council regain their power, not surrender the power to the mayor or anybody else when it comes down to, thank you. Listen, you guys, you take politics out of it that way. Also, the charter stipulates, you know, that at that time, the charter stated that this agreement had to go before the public to vote. What are you doing when you manipulate the charter, as was done with the two people who served on the charter commission, Mr. Jeff Simon and Mr. Freddie Decourt?
I'm proud of that.
One of those two, all right? That's why we're in the position we're in. Maybe we need to go back and adjust some of these things in our charter to make sure that this council has the voice that they should have with respect to representing the citizens in their respective districts. All right? Now, again, they all agree that ten years is not a long time, but it's plenty enough time to us to go before the Public Census Commission. Maybe we can get some of those rates adjusted, maybe not. But it gives Clico enough time to get some of those faults that we have in now straightened out before we say, okay, we're going to go with twenty-five more years of this. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And we're talking about doing things a new way? Come on, the public is watching. They know, they're going to see your votes tonight. They know who's fighting for them and who is not. They know who is throwing in the towel, you know, with this corporation thing. But they also would like to know that we are not being put in a position where we can be used as parts, all right, going forward with a twenty-five-year contract. We stuck in that contract regardless of what changes we might make when it comes to the rates at some later date, but we stuck in that contract, right? And that's adequate. It's going. People are looking at you guys, they know what you're doing. They know when the politics is being played, you know? They know when somebody is pushing a project like you, Mr. Gosler, who talked about how responsive Clico was with the tornado. I would have been faster than that if I'm negotiating the contract at the time this take place, all right? So we see those things, that's politics, Mr. Gosler. We want to talk about supporting our people, not playing politics. And look at our bills, Freddy, all right? The City Hall bill. You know this place produces over fifteen hundred kilowatt-hours every day. All right? So you stuck, and the city is stuck at ten cent. Ten cent, all right? That's where you, that's the category we fall in, per kilowatt-hour. Ms. Ledbetter brought a paper referring to other places that were there charging, I mean, the different companies and corporations. Why is it all those corporations, at a minimum, in Clico is over the top? They're providing the same service, it's not going to change because we go with less years, it's not going to start halfway, excuse my French, halfway doing their work instead of, you know, doing it all because we went down to ten, to ten years with this agreement. That's not going to change anything. I mean, they'll be out of here, you know, in a hurry as far as Republican Census Commission is concerned. It's not going to happen. So don't let that be a scare tactic, all right? That, you know, you fall for. Again, we got to do this for the people, y'all. Y'all up here for the people. We not up here for Clico. We up here for the people. We're not going to allow politics to come into play. We're not going to let the people lose their voice or their power because their council persons, their representatives, didn't take a stand and keep fighting. You say you have faith in the Lord, fight till the end, all right? Receive what God determines. That's going to be the outcome. Y'all praying in here every day. All these people following God, but you don't have faith to keep fighting, you know, because, Freddy, you, like Ms. Ledbetter said, you almost say, we can't do this, we can't do that. That's not the case, Freddy. We got to keep fighting, all right? Now, we'll know what God decides when those decisions are finalized. So don't say we can't do something. You know, you might not want to do it, but my faith tells me keep fighting. That's the faith in the Lord that we praying to in here every day, every time y'all have a meeting. But now, all of a sudden, we can't do something? Jesus. That's it. Ten years, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Mayor Proton Ricky Gosler, thank you. Foreby.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh-three, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to a local police department at a cost not less than twenty-five thousand dollars in accordance with state law.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Brooke Marquardt and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gosler and Councilman Brooke Marquardt, thank y'all. Uh, let's see, Foresee.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh-four, an ordinance amending sections two and eight dash zero-one of the City of New Iberia Charter relative to election districts.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilman Dustin Swier. Anybody from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So move.
Um, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and Mayor Proton Ricky Gosler. Thank y'all. Foresee.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-three dash oh-seven, amendment number six, an ordinance amending the budget to roll over prior year's unused appropriated funds for district projects.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Uh, Councilman Brooke Marquardt, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, thank y'all. Foree.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-three dash oh-eight, amendment number seven, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect change order number three on Civic Center Marina Phase One project.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there anybody from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Brooke Marquardt and I think Councilman David Broussard on that one. Thank you. Uh, Foref.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-two-three dash oh-nine, amendment number eight, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect Keep Louisiana Beautiful Beautification Grant.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed, and who was second? You, oh, Councilman Brooke Marquardt, thank you. Anyone to comment on this one, on this item? Hearing seen none. Motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and Councilman Brooke Marquardt. I think it's the most opening-closes we ever did. Anyway. Yeah, you can't do that. I already tried that. Uh, all right, now we're moving on to five A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-six, an ordinance to amend and extend for a period of twenty-five years until December sixth, twenty-fifty. Ordinance number two thousand dash five eighty, adopted November eighth, two thousand, which ordinance granted a franchise to Clico Power LLC, formerly Clico Utility Group Incorporated, its successors, and assigns for the construction, maintenance, and operation of electric utilities, electric generating facilities, and/or transmission and distribution systems in, through, and across the city of New Iberia, Louisiana municipality, for, and for the use of the streets, alleys, and public places of said municipality in connection therewith for the generation, transmission, distribution, and sale of electric current, energy, and/or power, and to modify the terms of said franchise granted in ordinance number two thousand dash five eighty as here and after set forth.
I need a motion.
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 Motion by Councilman Brooke Marquardt and a second by Councilman David Broussard.
And, may I want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Offer a motion to postpone, um, for at least two meetings.
Okay.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to postpone. Uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter and Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed. Uh, so is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes, of course. The reason that I would like to postpone this.
Wait, don't we have to vote for it? Wait.
It's a debatable motion.
Debatable motion.
So I think, I think that you can debate.
The motion.
The motion.
Yeah, so now we have a motion to postpone. So the question is, do we adopt the motion to postpone?
Right.
And that question is debatable.
That's what I thought. That's why I opened it for debate. Because you were telling me to vote, but we got to, we got to talk about it.
Not quite yet.
Yeah, after we talk about it. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to make sure I'm doing this right.
Yes, and the reason I proposed a motion is because at our last meeting, we voted unanimously to move it forward, the introduction. But it was stipulated that, and I asked personally, if we didn't have the items in writing, an addendum to this standard contract that Clico has been proposing for twenty-five years to hold off on a vote. And we have not gotten anything specific in writing that can be basically signed by the mayor or, you know, having been signed by Clico, agreeing to specific things. There's been negotiations which have been good.
And I have put stuff in writing.
Yeah, you have maybe, but.
Well, I got to permit.
It's not in the form of an addendum to a contract either.
Well, I'm not signing this until it's in there, but we have negotiated and come to an agreement. I don't want to think that the last two weeks we haven't been doing anything.
No, you have.
We have negotiated, we've gone back and forth, and we have items in writing that Clico is willing to add to this agreement.
But.
And it's going to be added before I sign it, or I wouldn't sign it.
But now, there's some other things that would, that, you know, I think Clico, as far as for maintenance is concerned, on the lights, uh, it wasn't clear in what you've sent us.
There's more you want.
Exactly.
Okay, but I mean, I just want the public to know, we got some things, and I am going to go over what we got if you, if, well, I might not be able to.
I haven't gotten it if you.
I might not be able to if you deferred, but if you, if it goes further, I will be able to go through what we agreed to, but, but, anyway, go ahead, go ahead.
But the point is, it's been a back and forth, and I think we need to continue the back and forth because we are not getting what we're paying for. Remember, I gave everybody the amount that we are charged as a, as a city, as a municipality, and it's the highest out of all of them. So we should be getting more. The standard contract, you know, don't want to deviate from the standard contract, so why are we paying more if we getting the same thing everybody else is getting and they're paying less? Maintenance is a big thing, too. You saying that you can't maintain the streetlights, you know, because, oh, that, that might involve hiring somebody. Well, you're making enough money to hire somebody off of six hundred thousand dollars a year of our money whether they on or they off. Now, I'm at the point right now, you know, I had been, it's been a process, but, you know, I've kind of had a feel of this right now. You know. but, you know, I've kinda had a feel of this right now, you know, because we're not getting what we paid for, as some council members seem to think. You know, we need to get what we, we should, that we are paying for. And maintenance is your job. You said that adding lights, if there's no infrastructure there, it would be on the city to pay for that infrastructure. But why would we pay for that infrastructure when you are gonna keep it? It becomes yours then. So why would the city pay for something that's gonna become your infrastructure? If we want a pole put somewhere, are we gonna, is, is New Iberia gonna own that pole? No, Cleco's gonna own the pole. So, that's, there's something wrong there. So, if we want extra lights, Cleco should, should actually give us those lights because it's yours. They're not ours. And also, it's been a back and forth with you, and, uh, we've had some good conversations, but I think we need to take this a little bit further, and that's what I want some time to do, too. You have a board of directors, don't you? You have a CEO, don't you? Those people I would like to contact personally to see what we can get because it's obvious that you are go, you are go-between, but, um, evidently, I, I don't know what you telling the higher-ups and all, but I would like the opportunity to talk to them myself and possibly negotiate. I've done it before, and I was very successful at doing it, too. So, I, I think we need to, as a council, take a step back because this is not something that we need to do right now. We need the opportunity, since it's gonna be possibly twenty-five years, we're, uh, putting a lot of other administrations on the hook, so we need to get our ducks in the row and, and have something that we are proud of, if we gonna do the twenty-five years in general. So, we can't say, and then once we sign this thing, or we vote on it tonight to do it, we lose all our leverage because then they know we're gonna go with it, regardless to what is gonna be signed allegedly later. But we've given it, we, we thrown in the towel there. And I don't think, because we have two years left on the contract, we need to do that right now. We need to give it some time and hold Cleco's feet to the fire and have them do what should be done, especially with maintenance. Because that's ridiculous that we have to go around and put down light pole numbers and all when that should be your job, Cleco's job. We shouldn't have to pay for poles that's gonna be yours either when we want more lights in the city. So those are some things that we definitely need to, to, um, to talk to maybe some other people about because we haven't gotten very far with you. I wanted at least, um, somebody to, to go around the whole city at least once a month. I would take twice, you know, uh, the whole city every couple of months because it takes so long to get, once you report them, to get them replaced anyway. But, uh, having it done every six months, that's not acceptable. That's not maintaining anything. Lights are off for months then. So, fellow councilmembers, I think we need to hold off on this for a minute, really think about our constituents, our city. Uh, it is not time right now to throw in the towel, and I think we do need to take a little bit more time and definitely get more than we have for the price that we paying.
Anna, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, thank you, Councilwoman Ledbetter. So I'm just gonna add a few more things to what she said, um, because she covered a lot. I will say this, as I told you before, maintenance is your problem. We don't care how many people you have to hire. If you have to hire a hundred people to check our streetlights, that's your problem, not ours. We're paying you to do it, and Cleco needs to get it done. And if you guys are not doing it, we need to have some penalties in the contract so that we get some discount because y'all not servicing us properly. It is unfair that you guys look to us to do your job, and that's just not acceptable in any type of negotiations. We should not be doing, why, why would we spend our city money to do your job, and we already paying you to do it? That's the first thing. So, I'm looking for penalties when y'all don't perform. The second thing is, is that in addition to just putting lights up, let's talk about technology. You guys are giving us nothing for the future. In the next twenty-five years, I hope that this city has more technology, more things available. But we may not have the infrastructure to support new businesses that wanna come here because we're still on old antiquated systems here. So, we got old lights and all, whatever, it could be so many different things. And we wanna attract businesses to this, to this city. And having an old infrastructure and have no guarantees of any future improvements to our, our infrastructure is not okay. And, uh, we sat here in that meeting, the last meeting, and quite a few of the council members admitted that this is a flawed contract, but they want cameras. But the fact is, is that we should not handicap our city, our citizens, for twenty-five years with a flawed contract. Is our job to keep negotiating? Is our job to make sure that we don't handicap anybody in the future with something that we believe today is flawed? And so I asked my council members to really think about how you're gonna vote for this, and I would say, let's take our time, we got two years to negotiate this. The, and let's talk about the twenty-five years. So Cleco wants us to sign on for twenty-five years, not for any other reason, the fact that if they decide to sell this business, it looks really good to the person that's buying it because they have a contract for twenty-five years that's guaranteed there's a revenue stream. That's the only reason why they want these contracts to be so long because nobody else is asking us to sign a twenty-five-year contract. But a, a utility company, if they want to be sold to be competitive, they need that in negotiations as they sell this business to other companies. That's a negotiating thing. Listen, we got twenty-five years of revenue stream. So basically, what they're doing is barg, bargaining with us. Well, let's not let them do this. If we don't stop this as one of the largest municipalities in their region, then nobody, all the smaller municipalities cannot hold the counter, they can't do anything about it. We have to start forcing these companies to treat us with respect. And today, if we sign this, if we vote to move this thing forward, we're going to lose respect, not of a, well, of me probably, but also of the citizens of New Iberia because it is a flawed contract, and we can do better with more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Seen none? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Okay, it's four to three. Okay, so we
Her postponement fails.
Her postponement fails, and we, now we back to our original motion. So do I have, I wanna make sure I do this right. Do I need another motion? We already had a motion to get started. So now we start, I just wanna make sure, now we start debate on our original motion. Alright? Comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, could we, uh, maybe go over some of the questions that fellow councilmembers requested and, and get them answered if possible?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, if that's possible, is go over the answers that I got back that I emailed all of y'all.
Can we comment, comment on them as well?
Comment on whatever you want.
Okay.
But, but let me read them all, and then we'll, I think we'd be better off
Can we read them one by one and let us comment?
You wanna debate our comments one at a time?
Yes, because I'll forget what I wanna say.
Fair enough. Okay. On our first one, which was about solar panels, because originally, we, under the impression, we, people could not put a solar panel on their house and sell back the power. You can do that, and you have to follow the regs from the Public Service Commissioner, uh, General Order Zero Nine Nineteen Nineteen. So it regulates, well, let me finish and then, so it regulates what you're gonna get out of the deal after you do the solar panels. And that is state law, so every municipality, every utility company follows that. So you can put solar panels on your house, you can sell back the power, but you have to follow that. So that was our first one. So now I'll open it up, hang on. Now I'll open it up for questions and comments on this one. And I guess, I know who wants to go first. Yes, ma'am. I'm just trying to keep it orderly.
Sorry. You know how I am.
It's good, though, it's good.
Okay, so, I think one of the issues was, is that Cleco isn't, like, promoting solar panels to the City of New Iberia. We're not getting that push from a utility company because that's the future.
I didn't even know we could do them until now, so, but now we can.
Right, but the fact is, is that that's something that we should be looking at, they should be promoting if they wanna move us forward. We're not getting any of that. We get nothing. We get nothing but, uh, the standard. And like I said the last time, that standard contract has to go because they need, it's antiquated, they need to throw it out and start again. But that's part of what we need them to do, is they should be promoting new technology to us, and that's not what they're doing. So what are we getting? We're just getting standard, those standard services, and we paying a premium for that? It's gotta be something better than this.
Okay, anybody else wanna comment on item one, the solar panels? And then when I finish our comments, I'll call on Willie, and we'll just do each one, like, oh, I'm just trying, trying, you know. Well, well, you know what?
I know.
I tell y'all all the time, this, it takes a long time here, but it makes us better. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I was aware that, uh, the city, um, that Cleco does give, um, people who have the solar panels, if they register, if they know about it and all, and they're connected, they get a little bit back. But they don't get that much back, you know, and, no.
I was kinda calculating it, and they don't. But they get something back, but it's the same for everybody.
You know, that's something that
It's the same for everybody.
I know, that's something for the Public Service Commission that we can go there and actually, uh, you know, argue a point about that, and that's something that I would definitely like to do for, for definitely lower rates, as well as, you know, people with solar panels getting a little bit more.
Well, you've already requested a resolution for the next meeting, and it's on the chart already. So that's coming. Regardless of how this ends, you know, we are, I know who I'm sending, anyway, but that's a whole nother subject. Anybody else on this item? Then Willie, I'll call on you, and we'll just do them one at a time.
Okay. On the issue of solar panels, we are invested in utility-grade solar. On the residential side, we do not do anything with, we, we don't sell, we don't lease, we don't do anything with residential solar panels. There are companies, there are many companies that you can lease the equipment, you can buy the equipment, they'll put it on your house. Those individuals and those companies will contact us with the customer to get this, to get this net metering contract and, and to get this, this tariff with the Public Service Commission. The Public Service Commission tariff is across the board with everyone. That's what they determine, that the affordable cost and, and what the customers are gonna get back, that's not anything that, that's on a case-by-case basis with each utility. That's, that utility, that Public Service Commission tells us what we can give back to the customer.
Okay, but, and I, I do understand that. The problem is, is that the, these customers in New Iberia are paying a premium compared to the other residents of the city, of the, uh, state of Louisiana, because Cleco's the highest. So, they're getting shafted because you guys are hired, and they get such a small amount back, whereas at least the other groups aren't paying as much for it.
He has no answer.
It's, it's the truth.
It is.
That's fine, we'll, we'll move on to the next one. I mean, that's all I can do. Number two, which was about monitoring the streetlights. Cleco will contend to patrol the main, now, remember, they weren't doing anything before, and this has been a big bone of contention, and, and I know that. Now they've agreed, they can do, they can do one district in two hours. So what they've agreed to is, once a month, they'll do a district. So in six months, they'll do the whole city, and then they'll do it again. So, but it's all the streets. When we first started talking, it was nothing, and then it was just the main thoroughfares, which left out all the neighborhoods. Then I said, when, you know, and, and we've been, up until today, we have been going back and forth on, on this issue. So where it stands right now, they will do the whole city twice a year that they will police their product. I, I know that, uh, Councilman Ledbetter, you wanted it four times, every quarter. Uh, we have been going back and forth, that is something that we've talked about in every phone conversation, every day. But right now, what they have agreed to is, they will do two hour, in two hours, a Cleco employee can do a district. And so they will do that twice a year, they'll police their whole system. So that's more than we had before. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Two hours, one district. We have six districts. That's a total of twelve hours. That could be done, if you, if you space it out, in a week.
That's right.
For one, for the whole city. If you spaced out the two hours a day, in a week, you'd be done with it. So I don't see what the problem is in getting somebody to take two hours to do, you know, a district a day, a night, or, a night, for sure.
Yeah, it has to be at night.
Yeah, it would be at night. And, uh, you know, do it, you could do it every month. It only, it's only gonna take you a week. I don't see what the problem there is. Two hours of manpower? You said it was two hours per district, right? To, to cover a district.
Yes, ma'am, we commit to two hours per month to, to whatever district, a, and I don't know, I, I guess we get with, with, with the mayor, the council, and see where you wanna start first. But two hours is quite a bit of time. If, if we know the address, we know the pole numbers, we know what we're looking for, we can do a, a good bit of patrolling in two hours. It, it may be a district, maybe more than a district. It just depends on, on how it progresses, how the lights are repaired and replaced, and, and, and the speed of, of the linemen as, as doing the assessment. Uh, we, we will continue to do the major thoroughfares quarterly, and we're gonna do the, the districts two hours per month.
And that's still not acceptable, you know, quarterly. When you saying that it's only gonna take you two hours to do a district. And like I'm saying, that would only take a week to do the full city every month. And I think that's would be what we would consider maintaining what you need to do because in your standard contract, that's what it says you are going to do. Maintain those items, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they belong to you. And we deserve more than you're gonna cover the whole city in six months. That's ridiculous. That's not giving any time to our districts because we all represent a whole bunch of people. And two hours to cover a district. Think they can do it once a month and get it done. That's what I would be looking for, and hopefully, everybody else would be, too.
Exactly.
Since we paying more than everybody else. We not getting what we paid for. So, I'm just saying, you've said two hours. Two hours a night, a week, it would take possibly for that one person to cover the city, and that's what we need. That's what I would like to ask your board of directors and your CEO to do for us. So would you give me that information so I can definitely contact them? They haven't agreed to, they say they don't wanna postpone it, some of us, but I'm not letting it go here. Okay? So I definitely would like that information. And I hope the mayor wouldn't sign off on anything until this is done. We also need to go to the Public Service Commission about some things, too. Those are the things that we should come together to do for all our citizens. You know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't stand for less, we shouldn't take less
That's right.
when we have the opportunity to do this. We should come together as a group and say, "This is our city, this is what we need to do, and these are the, some of the things, this is the time in order to get this done." Instead of saddling somebody else, well, twenty-five years down the road with what we have right now. This is our time, and if we don't take it, we've lost the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, you're saying, basically, you do this twice a year, so perhaps we should pay y'all twice a year? We do it based on your maintenance schedule? Because it's unfair that we pay We do it based on your maintenance schedule, because it's unfair that we pay you every month, and you're not providing the service every month. That's unfair to us. And so if you wanna do it every six months, then let's change the payment schedule, or, let's come up with when you guys don't perform. Let's figure out how long it should take you to replace a light from the time we request it till the, and if y'all don't meet that expectation, then we get a discount. Because you guys are getting off scot-free from a performance standpoint. You don't wanna give maintenance, you're not giving us any guarantee, it takes you weeks, months to replace a light, and you expect us to continue paying, that's unfair. And as a councilperson on this council, if nobody else cares, I care about the fact that we are not getting what we're paying for. And I'm not gonna sit back and not say, and say that this is a good contract for the city of New Iberia, because it's not. Because we are not being serviced by CLECO for the amount of money we're paying. And again, we're one of your largest customers. So, I don't think we're ready to move this thing forward, I think we still have some negotiating to do because we have got, we've got to come to a meeting of the minds, and we're not there yet. Because you guys have got to move more toward us, because we've already, y'all, we've already gone the extra mile. So now, we need y'all to move toward us with some of these negotiations. Because this, this, and this, this isn't good enough for what y'all being paid. And it's unfair to the citizens of New Iberia that we spend their tax dollars this way.
Other comments? Yes sir?
Every time I think about speaking, these gentle ladies pretty much have spoken all of my sentiments and thoughts. Twice a year, to me, is, is really minimal. It's minimal because, that's the problem with the lights, it's a back and forth cat and mouse thing with the lights. They go off today, we call it in today, they go off tomorrow. So that's the real problem for me. I, I'm dealing with real issues, for me, that's how I govern, or serve. You know, I call in a light today, it get fixed next month, and then a week later, it's out again. So, to me, that's, I'm not, I hate to say that's too much work, but it really is, 'cause we shouldn't be right now after dark going try to check our lights anyway. That's not our job, City Hall closed at four thirty. We can answer phone calls all in the midnight hours, but to say go in, in neighborhoods, you know, that may be deemed unsafe, and check on lights and all of that stuff, and I do it, I've done it, I don't have a problem doing it. But I think that, uh, professional light service company should do that on a regular. And whatever the regular is, I mean, it's up for the negotiations to, you know, figure out. But I think twice a year, for each district, it's like, it's like doing nothing for us, really, to be honest with you. 'Cause we don't, I mean, the lights are, the lights are really a problem, I mean, when I say they're a problem, call it in the day, fix it next month, next weekday out again, getting a call again. Like, I work for CLECO, I gotta go back and check them again, 'cause we gotta, why's this? Write down the light pole, the address, the color of the roof, the door, and all of that, and then turn it in. Man, that's too much work for us to get a light in, that's the truth, that's the truth. Now, y'all know, that's the truth. I called in lights before, and they were right in front, or right in between six eighteen and six twenty-four, I'm just saying. And it's like, oh, what color is the house, and what, no, that's too much work for us. You know, I hate to say that's too much work, 'cause we got, we signed up for a job that is a lot of work mentally.
You didn't sign up to work for CLECO?
Right. So, I mean, I, I think that's like, that's not enough ti, that's not enough, you know, that's not enough service for lights. I'm telling you, from my experience, ain't nobody called me and told me that, do this, that's not enough times checking lights. From the people who can fix them, change them, and spot, when they out, spot, when they bout to go out, spot, with the LED, if they've been changed to LED, I, you know.
Any other comments?
I mean, I guess while we're here, um, I'd like to report that streetlight across the street from City Hall being out, I saw it at the parade. I mean, one of the main streetlights needs to be fixed, but I normally turn everything in online, I don't know if you guys are calling or, uh, doing the email, yeah, I never have to, I never have to give, uh, all those kinds of descriptions. Yeah, I'll do, uh, the address, and, uh, if it's in between, I'll say it's in between these two addresses, and it's a little bit quicker that way, for me, anyway, instead of like waiting online, uh, talk to somebody. But, um, it, it would be nice to have more patrolling, but, I mean, at the same time, we are able to turn in online if needed. So I don't want any of the constituents to think that you have to wait six months before it's fixed, 'cause that definitely should not be happening, waiting six months before it's fixed, um, that we can turn it in, or they can turn it in online too, uh, and hopefully, it's fixed within the week.
Uh, any?
No.
Anybody else hadn't spoke yet? Not here, um, we can go agi, I just wanna make sure everybody had a chance.
Okay.
I mean, Ricky's not here, but, uh, go, what, who wants to speak?
I just wanted to say.
And then I'm gonna turn over to Willie when we finish.
The way Councilwoman Markat said it, hopefully, it shouldn't be hopefully.
I say hopefully about everybody.
But, you know, when you're paying somebody for a service, it shouldn't be hopefully, especially that extra amount that we pay. You know, it shouldn't be hopefully, it should be guaranteed, it really should. Within a, a reasonable amount of time, which would be no longer than a week.
And that should be, that should be outlined in the contract.
Should be.
You should have a timeframe in your contract that says how long it takes for the, in ten days, we will have the light fixed. That should be in the contract, that shouldn't be something where they get to decide, 'cause they might decide two months. And what if they sell to another company, and they say, we're not doing it at all, because we don't have it written in the contract? So we gotta think about, what are the, what are the things that are missing that could cause us problems in the future? And that's some of the things, and, and the other thing is, why do our constituents have to work for CLECO too? We don't wanna do it, they don't wanna have to go out there and do it. We're asking the constituents and us, and I, and I'm like, uh, Councilman Lewis, I've done this, so I know what it takes to, to turn all this, and I've turned them in online, but I'm good with computers, not everybody is computer savvy. A lot of the people in, in, uh, New Iberia don't even have internet services in their homes. So my thing is, is that, why are we putting that pressure on us when their contract says they are to maintain their infrastructure? We have got to make them accountable for what's in the contract, and we need to add some other things to the contract so that we get what we're paying for. So we just need to make sure we don't sign up for something that's not giving us what we need to move forward in this city.
I got a question, ma'am.
Okay, uh, anybody who didn't speak wants to speak, no, or you weren't in the room, you wanna speak, Ricky?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
No, all I wanna ask is, the, the light, I know, like, in, when you remodel in a house, the light, this the fixture, but it's not called infrastructure. Y'all lights all considered infrastructure, right?
Our lights are, right, it's all part of the infrastructure.
Any other discussion before I turn it over to Ricky? To Ricky, I'm sorry.
Ricky been talking in your ear, that's the thing.
I'm sorry, Ricky, Willie, anybody, any other discussion from the council? All right, Willie, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, uh, same as, same thing as I said before, Ms. DeDrew, we're gonna continue to, to patrol the thoroughfares, and do a two month, a two hour patrol per month on the, on the diff, on the districts. We do still have the website with the button on the website that anybody can go in and, and report the streetlight being out. And, and, uh, a, again, that's, the, it, the customers can report it as, as fast as, as, just by going and click that button, and, and click the address, and, and let us know. And that order is made instantaneously, it comes out the next day, and within seven days, five to seven days, that light is fixed, that's the, that's the process. I, I don't know of any that goes months out without being repaired.
Really?
I would say that we have a different experience, you should probably check your records, do, uh, some sort of, uh, data analysis on the information you get from when y'all tickets are open to when they're closed, because I guarantee you, you probably find quite a few of them that are more than seven, seven to ten days. And that's easy for y'all to do, if y'all, if y'all recording tickets. Dates down.
Any other comments? Uh, next one, CLECO committed to converting two hundred lights a year to LED. That's in addition, it's not really worded that way, and, and that's something that we would have to fix, no, I mean, I didn't sign anything yet, but it's two hu, 'cause we had that discussion, it's two hundred lights per year, over and above the lights that break that y'all fix. 'Cause when a light breaks, or goes out for some reason, y'all put an LED, but in addition.
Not always. Based on what you said the last time, not always.
No, but that, that's part of the discussion that the mayor and I had, is, is that, when, when, instead of repairing from now on, uh, the metal halide, the high pressure sodium, we're gonna replace that light with an LED light.
Everything will be LED.
Right, but last time we met, you said something different, okay, I just wanna make sure.
Twice a year to patrol that before we had nothing, well, I got LEDs all the time, plus two hundred LEDs. And that's the good news of the LEDs, I have some bad news of the LEDs, but we'll wait till we get to that. So they would, in addition to what they replaced because it broke, they will do two hundred LEDs a year.
Okay, but, so.
But it needs to be worded like that.
Okay, but then it says, all costs associated with this request, to replace a functional metal, whatever, light, fixture with an equivalent LED shall be paid for.
If I want to buy more LEDs.
So they're gonna do two hundred?
They're gonna do two hundred that doesn't cost us anything, plus the ones that break. And then I want it, although it's not gonna work.
Okay, that, that's not worded, the, like what you're saying.
I know it's not, I know it's not, and that's something that Willie and I have already talked about, and it would be in an agreement before we sign the agreement, but that's something that we just negotiated this week.
Okay, so we just need that to be reworded. So how, so two hundred per year, so when did it get us to a point where we're fully LED? Do we know how many years that's gonna take?
Well, we have a little over four thousand lights, and a thousand, that's a round figure, nine hundred and something, nine hundred and, almost a thousand are LED. So that's three thousand lights to go.
Okay. So two hundred per year, so how many years? Fifteen?
It's, it's a lot of years, yeah.
Depends on how many break.
Yeah, 'cause I don't, they average, how many, did you tell me you averaged that break that you changed?
Uh, we have.
'Cause that was another figure.
Right, it's somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of three hundred to four hundred lights per, per, three hundred to four hundred light orders per year is what we receive.
And so, all of those that get replaced, plus two hundred more is what they committing to. So take the low number, take four hundred plus two, that's six hundred, so three thousand divided by
That's five.
Six hundred, that's five years.
That's perfect.
And, you think you're heading somewhere, I might as well do that one now, okay, because I, I, I don't.
That's what I want, in five years, so.
Yeah, but I don't, like I always say, I, I'm not, I don't talk smack. The problem is, when you look at the fees that, I'm just gonna tell it like it is, 'cause I always do. The fees that CLECO charges, that's approved by the Public Service Commissioner, you ain't saving millions of dollars. I'm not an idiot, I would take a million dollars out of the general fund right now and replace every damn LED if I could save millions in a few years. Who wouldn't do that? All right, so people who talk smack can, never mind, anyway. With what CLECO charges us, I don't say it's fair, I don't say it's right or wrong, CLECO has charges on LED lights that they don't have on the old lights. So because they have charges that have been approved on the LED lights, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we don't save any money. Even though there is savings to switch to an LED light, all right, and I'm not happy about this one. But I'll turn it over to Willie, then I'll turn it back to you, am I saying anything that's wrong?
No.
So you can convert the whole town to LED lights in one year, and our utility bill is not going down.
Okay, so then, that's a negotiating point. Just because the Public Service Commissioner said that they could, doesn't mean they, they have to, to charge us.
I didn't get anywhere on that. I'm just telling you, so.
Well, you know what, let's keep negotiating.
Some, some of the old lights, like the metal halide lights, which are the, the older white lights that you see, you have the high pressure sodium that are the, the orange, yellow lights, metal halide are the ones that, that preceded the, the high pressure sodium. Those to the municipalities have a different rate, uh, they're, they're charged quite a bit less than the, the high pressure sodium, and, uh, quite a bit less than, than the LEDs. And the LEDs are a higher rate because of, of the material and the, hate to say the technology, but the, but the new technology and, and the new material to make it is, is a higher cost than the older lights. The, the, the efficiency is greater on the LEDs, but the material cost is higher.
So, one thing I'd like to do is find out how much other cities are paying that are not in CLECO's, um, region, how much they're paying for their LED lights. Let's do a comparison, so we can see, are we getting a fair price from CLECO? Because we already know that the one thousand watts, we're not getting a fair price. So I think every aspect is saying we should look at and compare prices, so we know whether or not we are in a position, we're in a good position with CLECO, or if we need to continue negotiating with them, because we're being overcharged.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, so that, that did two of them.
Six on the first one.
Yeah, our next one, uh, okay, new streetlight, 'cause we didn't have that in writing. Where the existing infrastructure is available, CLECO will add a streetlight, an LED streetlight, at no cost to the city. If the infrastructure's not there, if a pole's not there, if the transformer's not big enough, if there's not a line there, if it's underground, we gonna have to spend money. But that was another way to get the LEDs up, that we request more, now, we have to pay the bill. So what we're gonna have to do as a council, because it's gonna grow on us exponentially. In other words, if it's ten dollars a month for a streetlight, we're paying a hundred and twenty dollars a year for that streetlight. So if we come up with, we're gonna allow, I don't know, you know, two, three, five streetlights, whatever, uh, two streetlights per district, okay? So now, we're, we adding twelve streetlights, so we know twelve times the hundred and twenty dollars is what our bill's gonna go up. Well, it's not bad the first year, it's not bad the second year, but you know, when you go ten years down the road, we just need to know, I'm not saying I'm against it, but we just need to know how much we're gonna be spending in addition on our monthly bill. But CLECO, and that was not, no offense, that wasn't always the case, when we tried to add lights early on when I got here, they, they were charging us. So we didn't add any streetlights, we said, we're not gonna do that, but now, they're free, as long as the infrastructure's there, and then what we're just gonna have to do is come up with a policy amongst ourselves, how many streetlights do we wanna add? Uh, I mean, it can't be just carte blanche that we say, hey, CLECO's putting streetlights, because it is gonna catch us at some point, because our utility bill's gonna go up every month. So that's one we'll just have to work on together, but it was good that we could add streetlights. So now, turn it over, yes ma'am?
Well, if it was in the contract that we would only pay when the lights are on, and we're not paying for the lights that are off, it would definitely average out.
Mm-hmm. And also give them some incentive to make sure they're back on.
If they want the money.
Yep.
So that is, that should be part of negotiations also. And like I said before, ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
If the pole and everything on the pole is gonna belong to them, why are we paying for something for them? That, that makes no sense, for us to buy somebody's infrastructure for them.
On that, on the light, we're not paying for the light, we're paying for the utility bill.
Service.
No, 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 I'm talking about on the ones that are not even.
Oh, we on another odd, right.
No, 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 you said only on those that there's infrastructure. If there's no infrastructure there, then we would be responsible for the pole.
For the pole, or the transformer, or whatever.
And my point is, why are we buying a pole and all the stuff that go on it, when it's beco, is gonna become their infrastructure? That, that make, that doesn't make any sense, because they benefit, because we're gonna be paying a bill on it.
That's one that we do with every utility, we have to buy a fire hydrant, every time somebody adds a fire hydrant, we have to pay for the hyd, or the developer has to pay for the hyd, hydrant, or we do. I mean, that catches us with all utilities, again, I didn't say it's right or wrong, all utilities have a charge when you add something, and they don't pay for it, I mean, it's the same thing with Loco.
Oh, that's another story.
It's the same thing that they are adding to, 'cause Loco, I mean, I have one right now, I have a developer meeting, uh, I think next week, and that's, that's the issue on that one, but anyway, yes sir?
And when we, when somebody wants to build a subdivision, we make them pay for the street, and then give it to us.
Yep, so that, that's, that's one that happens all over. Okay, that's, that's everything that Willie and I negotiated over the last few weeks. So, in a nutshell, we got two rounds of checking the lights, where before we had none, we got two we got 200 LEDs plus the broken LEDs that they replace, oh, the lights are the broken, and they will replace them with LEDs. So I was trying to head for five years, we had all the LEDs, and I would have loved the savings, but you know, I don't have a savings at this point. Uh, and then they would allow the solar panels, and we can add streetlights once we come up with a policy of how many streetlights we would want to add. So that's everything that would go into a franchise agreement that I would not sign until we had that in our franchise agreement, if we choose to do that, and the one for the 200 lights is is not written in a, in a way that it doesn't, it doesn't say what Willie and I negotiated.
Uh-huh, and it it wouldn't say that they would be penalized if they don't fulfill anything.
But there's no accountability in that contract. There's no, there's no way for us to make sure Cleco is delivering good service, and are incentivizing them to deliver good service. Because there, if they don't perform, we get some sort of discount. And this is a performance-based contract. They've got to perform. They've got to install lights, they've got to make sure they stay on. I I just feel like we need, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet. And for 25 more years, if we do this, we will not, we're not going to be there. Like I said, Mr. Verzeron, I would like a copy of the Board of Directors' contact information, email addresses, and the CEO, and the upper Epsilon. I would definitely like to send them some letters.
Yes, ma'am.
And-
And perhaps even get a meeting with them.
That's a good possibility, too.
In-person meeting.
And we will do the resolution-
We're one of their largest customers.
We will do the resolution next month to go before the Public Service Commission to ask for a decrease in our rates.
And now we know we need to add to that, the removal of this fee for LED lights, because that's taking away the savings from the cities, which is utterly ridiculous.
Yes, sir, yes, Hannah?
Yeah, sure. Just just a few comments, um, I think we've we've all discussed some really relevant questions, and according to the franchise agreement, I think, if I'm not mistaken, all the questions that were turned in were answered by Cleco, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So so questions were turned in and answered, maybe not to the likens of every council member. I think every franchise agreement has flaws, they have some good, they have some bad. A lot of things work for the city, a lot of things may not work in your favor. But when you're looking at the general scope of a franchise agreement, Cleco is in charge of providing reliable power to your constituents, which they do. They're in charge of responding to a natural disaster and providing back power to your constituents when they do, they do. They're providing street lighting in your city that you requested, which they do. Now they're amping the game up, providing more. Is it what you, what we want? No, but it's more. They're stepping up to the plate. They're providing surveys of the city lighting system, 50% more than they did before. We all want more, but they meant halfway. So win for the city. Are there more things that we want? Yeah, we want. I want Loco's bill to go down. I just got a letter, it going up. Are we going to tell Loco, "You can't increase my water fee"? Can't do it. They're they're a private company. This is a private company. We cannot run them out of the city. They own the infrastructure. So they came to the table. I heard a lot of question about the underprivileged and the electric bills in the city. I totally agree. I think that is an issue. They have some multiple programs to assist, and they went over those programs to assist, to apply for those things. I think in general, Cleco has been a good store to our community. They're coming with a franchise. Is 25 years too long? Some say yes, some say no. But for them to make a reliable investment in our community to keep improving our infrastructure, they need long-term deals. Would we like our megawatts and our electric price to go down? Everybody would. I'd like, like I just said, I'd like Loco to go down, but unfortunately, inflation's up, their cost goes up, our cost goes up. It's passed down to us whether you like it or not. I I I welcome the challenge to go to Public Service Commission, I welcome the challenge to go to the Board of Directors and discuss our issues. But as a city, what we're looking for is two things, reliable source of electricity, and to make sure the lights stay on to our constituents during hard, during a natural disaster, and provide safe infrastructure. Think Cleco has, maybe it's not all what we'd like to see, but I think Cleco has been a good store to our constituents, and I think we have a a good franchise agreement. Do I agree with everything in it? No, but I think they've come to the table and and accordingly met some of our needs, and I would hope that we can push this issue forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Broussard.
I've seen some other, I've seen some smaller communities have their own water companies, have their own electric. I don't want. We don't want that headache every day. So we kind of glad, sir, that, uh, Concombre, Cleco, been around for so many years, in Yarbury, bad and good. I don't want that headache every day on this council, getting calls. What about this? What about that? We have to deal with a good group such as Cleco, our water company. Look at, look every day, I watch a month on the news, right here in our own parish, in Coto, water troubles. So we don't, I don't want it personally. I pressure every day, every month, questions, why we're not doing this or that. I'm I'm satisfied with Cleco and, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I think we had a couple of months of this, questions and answers. And, uh, by God, you think it's bad? If we own this thing and we we get calls all the time, it'd be a lot higher than we paying Cleco if we had to do it ourselves. That's just my statement. What I see around this state, small little towns trying to make it, it doesn't work. You need a organization to come in. They're all asking for our water, electric, you know, they all want to tie in. So that's my, that's my piece on this.
Councilman Swir.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, Pro Tem brought up a good point. A company the size of Cleco and the money that they're investing in the, in the infrastructure and everything they're doing, a five and 10-year deal won't cut it. I mean, we look at a lot of other, yeah, you see like Loco 10 years, I believe, or whatever, but the size that their investment, they want to make sure their investment's safe. So looking at it from a a realistic and business perspective, that's why I don't think they're going to go to a 10-year deal, because their investment is so much more. So that's just my, Ricky had brought it up, and I've I've been thinking about that for a lot, and I just decided to just let y'all know how I feel, and that's that's why I feel a 10-year deal, they're not going to go with it. And it's basically just rattling the cage, and it's not, we're not going to get anything out of it, so, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Uh, hang, does anybody didn't speak? No, I'm always making sure.
I know, I know.
Well, good. Okay, then, go ahead, yes, ma'am. Councilman Ledbetter.
I would hope, and this is a hope, that we all have our constituents and our our community in mind when we make decisions. Most often, big business always takes advantage of the little guy. We're all here to represent the little people. We're one of the little people, you know? Um, so we need to be on the people's side of this. The 25-year agreement that is too long because it's, uh, across a whole lot of administrations. Um, yes, maybe they're looking to sell, but that's on them, that that's, you know. If if that's what they want, want to do, that's all fine and good, but we shouldn't be a pawn in that. We shouldn't allow ourselves to be a pawn in that, you know, uh. And now is the time for us to get everything that we can get for the next possibly 10 to 25 years. If we settle now, we'll, we're going to lose. And now is not the time for us to lose. We need to really pump the brakes on this and take our time to make a sound decision. Explore all the avenues that we can. Talk to different people. Go to the Public Service Commission, talk to the CEO, talk to the Board of Directors to see what we can actually get, because we haven't talked to those people yet. And, you know, we being rushed to sign this deal for 25 years, and if we're going to do something for 25 years, we need to really do our research. And we haven't. And it, I think personally, is a disservice to our city, a disservice to our constituents, that we are rushing through this and getting them stuck into a contract for the next 25 years. Some of us may be gone, and this contract will still be here.
They'll all be gone.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean actually dead. I mean, not in, no office-
We won't be using power anymore.
Well, let's hope we're still alive, but we won't be on this seat, in these seats.
She didn't say, she didn't say what type of going.
Oh, I mean, maybe dead, oh, no, most of, we won't, well, possibly some of us might be back, because, you know, we've been recycled before. Quite a few of us have been recycled before.
I hope that they won't be electing us at that age.
So, uh, you know, uh, we do have differences of of opinion about these things, but, uh, hopefully, we we thinking about the people that we represent, and we don't want to stick them with something and they could have gotten better. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other remarks? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines.
Whoa, whoa, so I can, okay, so we're voting on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I meant, like, never mind.
What Cleco we don't?
I was a little confused.
Okay, yes, ma'am, no, I look-
Because we have so many motions, I got confused about which one we're voting on.
Yeah, where we are, we're back at the original, and we're voting on the original motion.
Okay, no, okay.
For you to, for you to continue in negotiations for, with Cleco, right?
Signing the contract.
No, this is, this is approved, this approves it.
Is it?
You don't want to vote again? I mean, is there somebody didn't understand?
Well, I think we, I was confused about what we were actually voting on at the time. No, that's fine. I mean, my vote stands.
My vote stands for sure, yeah.
No, that's fine. I mean, I've never, I never had somebody after, well, one time we had after the vote, somebody-
My 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 vote stands.
Don't mention any names.
That's fine, I mean, everybody's good, we're good. Okay, thank you all. Now we're moving on to five.
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh three, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia, New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus, and further authorizing the sale of same to a local police department at a cost not less than $25,000 in accordance with state laws.
Do you have a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman, who's made them?
I made a motion, Brooke second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, I was doing it backwards. Is there any discussion on this item? This is to sell that other charger. No discussion? Then please vote your machine. Thank you very much. Item five C.
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh four, an ordinance amending sections two and eight dash zero one of the City of New Iberia Charter relative to election districts.
All right, do you have a motion?
Motion.
So I have a motion by Councilman David Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item? Let's see, Mr. Cedric Left. Is there any discussion? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Five D.
Special ordinance number 2022 dash 2023 dash oh seven, amendment number six, an ordinance amending the budget to roll over prior unused appropriated funds for district projects.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
That should be unanimous. Uh, Councilwoman T. Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? And just to tell y'all, because Kevin's at a conference, they, I asked these questions before, uh, it's a total of $142,000, and that's spread out through the $700,000 that he, that the total of what the council was given. So we have about $142,000. Everybody kind of knows what they want to do, I think, now, so this will move the money so that we can, you know, get those things moving. Question? Yes, sir.
Um, is there a reason why?
You didn't have any money left, sir.
No, I'm not, hey, I'm not on this list on here, so I'm guessing I got all of it.
You did, you spent, and you spent it all in Little Brooklyn.
I did.
The bulk of it, you did, I mean, you built all that pavilion.
Reason why I ask, because I'm not on the, uh, on the actual ledger.
Yeah, it's not listed.
District six is not listed.
I understand. I I guess it's because you didn't have any money left.
Yeah. So it is 142 total?
Yeah, the total is 142 of what's left.
How much I got on there?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question for the Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, ma'am.
So can we get you to split that money amongst all the the districts, your 45 left?
I don't have 45,000, no.
That's what it says.
No, I got, I put it up to a sign for the pepper place.
It says 45,000 right here. Look at it, you're the first one.
You spent-
Whatever I have left, I'll split it with all the districts.
Perfect.
Well, you spent, okay, let me think.
But I did it against the wall.
You spent money on the wall, you spent money on, it's from memory, memory, money on Lewis Street, right at the beginning.
Right.
And then you committed to the sign.
Committed to the sign, that's right.
And I think you committed, I don't know how much you committed to the sign. I had some money in the project, but I didn't have enough.
Okay.
Uh, so let me research that.
Absolutely, whatever's left, I'm I'm fine with that, absolutely.
Any other comments on the council money?
So so Ricky, Ricky does-
It's going away soon.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson.
Councilwoman Johnson.
We're always thinking of saying, "Hey, I'm serious." So you 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 got 45 left?
I don't think he did. I will find out what he has left.
Going to find out, but he said he was splitting.
I thought that was a lot.
I think that's a mistake, because I think he committed to-
When I saw that, I was like, okay, he needs to give us some money.
I think he committed to a lot of stuff. Any other questions or comments about?
Even if I don't have any left, I'd be willing to split it out.
Oh, my God.
Okay, would you provide me a check then?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is District Four have a negative in front of the number?
All of them do.
No, look, it's an extra.
Oh, an extra, oh, I don't have it on mine.
Oh, okay, it might just be my paper then, because his doesn't have it. It looks like a negative, it's 27,000.
I think it's from the copy, because I have it too, but it's the copy.
So you you're not a negative.
It's not me?
No.
Double negative is a positive.
Yeah, that's right, it's really a positive. Okay, no other discussion, except Ricky's not getting out of here with any money left. And I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Our street is showing looking good on Lewis.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, five D.
Special ordinance number 2022 dash 2023 dash oh eight, amendment number seven, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect change, order number three, on Civic Center Marina Phase One project.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Uh, pause here if you have a question. That total is $1,600.
So what are they doing?
Just bring Paul up since he's waited the whole meeting and done that.
Well, we have to ask you a question, since you've been sitting here all that time.
That's what I'm thinking, he's been there the whole time.
If you remember, we came a few weeks back, and this was the upgrade we did on the sign.
Oh, that's right, yeah, mm-hmm.
Right, so that's what this is all about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted you to have a little exercise, you know, you've been sitting down too long.
Oh, no, I'll be back up in a moment.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, five F.
Special ordinance number 2022 dash 2023 dash oh nine, amendment number eight, amendment, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect Keep Louisiana Beautiful Beautification Grant.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas, and this cost us $750 to get $5,000. So this is a grant that Jane saw, and like, in a day wrote it and sent it in, and we happened to get it. Um, so that's that's the explanation on that one.
What is it going to be used for, you know?
Uh, cypress trees, yes.
Oh, that's the trees, okay.
That will finish, yeah, I know, because we took over, of course, Rodrique Park is now our park, and there wasn't enough money to finish all the landscaping, and so this is a grant that's buying some big cypress trees, are are pretty good sized, that that will be planted there that kind of finishes off that project, for the most part.
It's 20 cypress trees, and, um, they're going to be planted along the edge of the Bayou Chesh by city slips. There's a green space, a two-tier green, a green space, this is the upper level. We already have some cypress trees against the back of my building, and it's just going to expand all through there, so you have a nice grove of trees, kind of softens up the hardscape that's there now. And it'll invite a lot of people to come down to that space via public- And it'll invite a lot of people to come down to that space via public park area. It's a continuation of where Ted Viatar started with the George Rodriguez Park.
And we had committed when we took the park to finish, you know, whatever we needed to finish. And this was a, you know, an in, very inexpensive way to finish some landscaping.
And they're nice sized trees.
Yeah, how big are they? Do you, do you know?
I think they're at least 10 to 12 foot tall.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty good.
So they're going to grow fast, so.
That's going to happen this year? I mean, it'll be planned?
I think this is part of the process and I guess the cooperative agreement.
Yeah, because I already, remember last time they gave me permission to sign the agreement or we would have lost the grant? Now we're taking care of the financial end of it, because it's going to move quick.
Yeah, the tree location is already staked out.
Yeah, no, I think.
And they have the contract or lined up. It's just a matter of signing the agreement.
Okay. Good, any further discussion? Then please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, we move on to six A.
Resolution number 23-07, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute for and on behalf of the City of New Iberia, any and all contracts and documents related to Felicity's Landing Project number 50-ML1-21-01.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and who was the second? I wasn't looking. Oh, Councilwoman Ledbetter, thank you. Deidre Ledbetter. Man, a lot of talking tonight. The, any discussion on this item?
So can we talk about what this is again?
Yes, sir. Felicity's Landing is behind the Steamboat Pavilion. It will give everyone access to downtown and to come and go. And it's also going to be the catalyst to get us a tour boat. It is 121 feet of a deck that's down to the lower level and set, a set of stairs coming up. So now we can entice a tour boat because they can come and dock there.
Right.
And once we have all of the Bayou stuff completed, I think that's going to become critical. Because right now, you cannot get out and go downtown because the elevation change is just too high, the bulkhead's too high. So this project, it came in $1,000 under the budget, I think, which is.
$714.
Yeah, I mean, it was like, yeah, I was doing the math in my head when we bid it. But it came in under the budget and I was very glad for that. It is probably the last Bayou piece for a while. You know, we'll finish what we're doing back here. The kayak dock is done. Felicity's Landing will be next. And then I didn't see if another grant comes, because let's face it, we use Public Works as the match and we got a lot of money. It has been good. I don't kind of see now other communities are jumping on and it's, it's no longer just like a, there wasn't any competition when we started this. There seems to be now, so we're going to continue to submit grants. But probably that will be the last project in the Bayou for a while.
Okay.
So this is a state-funded project. And so the resolution is part of the concurrent documents that Facility Planning and Control requests. So what you're voting on is part of the resolution, of the concurrent package. And the next thing you'll vote on, which y'all get to in a moment, is the recommendation to award. Now, you can't actually, Freddie can't sign the contract until the concurrent documents are completed. But you can make the recommendation to award. And the project's under budget, so that's where you are.
And what we're trying to do on these is do that now so that when the state gives us the concurrence and says everything works, you know, it's all approved, I can sign it, because we're always under the gun. I don't want to lose this contract. They hold their prices for 45 days and after 45 days, they can go up. So we're trying to start doing both of these at the same time at a meeting, but I'm not signing anything until, I can't, or we don't get paid back, until the state says it meets all that, their concurrence requirements.
So is there, in the plan, is there like some sort of plaque or bus of Felicity or something?
Well, we're going to have a choice. It's not in this, but I definitely want to do something. And the reason I renamed it Felicity's Landing, because her history was right across at the DePuria Mansion, what later became Mount Cornwall. I'm trying to promote all the history I can. We're going to have some choices, you know, we have a plaque in the front for Felicity. So I didn't want to take that off of Main Street, because I think it belongs there. Our choices are, no one knows, there's one painting, but no one really knows what Felicity looked like, okay? So I was thinking a plaque instead of a bus, because we don't know what she looks like. But you know the plaques that you and I have been working on?
Yeah.
Those are going to become, because I can't get a state plaque anytime I want one. We already have one Felicity, they're going to give us another one. But the plaques that we found and have been looking at are going to be, they're a close second. I mean, they're good, they're made out of the same material as the state ones. They look official, because we plan on starting to document our history all over with those plaques. So at least we're going to have a plaque.
Okay. What sits in my district, I'll hold one of mine for that.
Okay, okay, good, good.
So, so we do have a sign, illuminated sign that designates it as Felicity's Landing.
But the plaque would tell the history entire to some.
I meant more about the history.
So it might be possible to do some kind of an integration of Felicity herself within the sign.
Okay.
We could talk to the sign company.
And if it was a silhouette, you wouldn't know what she looked like anyway, you know, that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
And then we do a plaque.
Yeah.
Good, good. Anybody else? Anything further? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. Six B.
Resolution number 23-08, awarding contract to Coastal Timbers Incorporated for the Felicity's Landing Project number 50-ML1-21-01 and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith, all contingent upon approval from the Office of Facility Planning and Control.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item? We kind of did with the last one.
So, just more of a question on process. So why would we make the lighting system alternate? Because wouldn't we want that?
We would want it, but if we didn't have enough money, it'd still function. And there are actually streetlights there, because it's right along Fulton Street. So it had some lighting, so you, you've got to pick something. In other words, I always try to do deduct alternates, because, we're talking about that a job today. Because our jobs are, in the economy we're in, in the market we're in, the contractors are busy, prices are going up, materials are hard to get. So some things are increasing in cost. So to make sure the jobs come in the money, I always have to pick something and it's not always easy as a deduct alternate. But that was one that it would have still functioned, it would have functioned as well, but it still could have functioned without some lighting. Because we had lights in there.
We also had an opportunity, as Freddie was saying, to, to structure a power system should the lighting be over budget. Where we could at least bring power in and then add light fixtures later. Because you want to kind of do that in advance of the construction.
Because I could always find a way to pay for a few fixtures later.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, I get that, I just, it seems like the lighting system is kind of important there. I was just wondering.
But it's such a basic project. It's, it's a dock, some stairs, a gate, a sign and lighting. They're really, if you cut anything else, it doesn't function. It's kind of a weird one.
Yeah, okay.
So your project bid on January 18th, and there were three bids that were turned in. So you had some really competitive bids. You had a company out of Lake Charles, one out of Lafayette and one in from New Iberia. So your higher bid, if you added up the value of the lighting with the basic components of the project, was Kealan and their value was $539,700. Triad, their value was $480,000. And then Coastal Timber was 418, 286. And the budget was 419. So you're $714 under budget. So that's a good thing.
Yes.
No, that was amazing.
We recommend that you accept that bid.
Any other discussions? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, six C.
Resolution number 23-09, awarding contract to architect Paul J. Alle for the American Rescue Plan project entitled Weston Park Expansion and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Councilman David Broussard. Paul, why don't you tell us about the project?
Sure, this is, this is the building adjacent to the park, which the city purchased with multiple, multiple uses. And so there's a budget of $250,000, a professional fee of $15,500 to do the necessary drawings, to develop out the spaces as per the scope of the work and, and the request of the mayor to make the building function for multiple spaces that the community can use and also includes the requirements of the state fire marshal and those necessary cementals that are going to be taken care of.
And what we're trying to do is that wing that is closest to the park, where we are hoping we have enough money to coat the roof, put zone line units, small zone line units, tear a wall down between two of the rooms so that we end up in the West End with a senior citizens little area, like what we have at Seer Gate, we don't have one there. So those two classrooms will become a senior citizen center. And then we're trying to make another one where it will become a computer lab. And those would be part of the park. You know, if we have money to do, go a little further in that wing, we will. But that's the two main uses that, you know, we are hoping to accomplish.
And I think you've got the police department that's going to occupy the space.
Yeah, and if I have enough, then, they, they will occupy the training, but I don't have to do too much in that area. Just firewall them off, I think, you know, but that, that shouldn't be too bad. But anyway, that's what we're doing there.
You're also, you're also going to pick up that common space for circulation for use of the park, which is really kind of nice, because you can make some nice walking trails. And incorporate that into the.
And then once we get that going, I have a little money to do a community garden. But I wanted to get the building at least something functioning there, that it wasn't a, you know, just a dead school. But then I'm hoping that that proceeds pretty well and then we pop up a community garden there. Anyway, any other questions or comments?
Do we have money for like landscaping or anything?
Not right away, probably. That is something that I am looking at with Public Works and with like all them little cypress trees I'm buying. I am starting to look at some other ways that we could do some, some landscaping and kind of clean, not just that, at all the parks, we've got some bare spots, but. I'm going to try to get Public Works where I start buying trees through the contacts we've been making and then get Public Works schooled to plant them, because they're going to be our quickest way to get something done.
Right.
Some of the most gorgeous cypress trees in Louisiana is in that park.
Awesome.
Oh, at West End, you like.
They're, they're beautiful.
They are.
And I tried to expand the park in the other direction, told, off subject. There's some people that haven't paid their taxes and I've been trying to contact them. It's two families, same, they're related. One would like to give part of it, one wouldn't. But, boy, the trees over there are really nice too, but I don't know if that was ever going to happen, that's a family thing. Anyway, any other discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Six D.
Resolution number 23-10, awarding contract to architect Paul J. Alle for the Simon Theater Interior Renovations Project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Councilwoman Marla Lewis and, who was second? I think you were, huh? Councilman Dustin Swir, thank you. This is a really small project that we had funded through the budget. We're replacing the carpet with carpet tile, because it's all stained up and everybody uses that building. We're doing some touch-up paint. We're trying to find a solution to kind of resurface the stage, because if you look at the stage, it's been spilled on, so it really looks bad. And we're going to fix the sink in the kitchen that backs up. And so that's kind of what we're trying to do there. And of the pot of money that we approve, it's a $1,700 fee for them to handle the project.
We do have money in the budget to do more with the PA system and all of that, right?
Yes, we actually have, I think in this project, we have $10,000 that we're hoping to do a new sound system that that's included in this, if we have enough money. We allocated $45,000. I will come back to you, because we're going to break that apart. I think if we can't afford the sound system, I might come back and ask that we amend the budget, because the one there is terrible.
It is, that's why I went, I thought we had talked about it, I wanted to make sure.
Then that's something I'll come back to you, because everybody uses that building and, man, that thing crackles and it's, it's not good.
Right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Question about that, because last time I was there, somebody from Parks and Recreation was there and they said that that was the new system.
No, it's, it's, I don't think that's the new system.
I hope it's not the new system.
Me neither.
Maybe you to them.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I don't think it's good.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion on this one?
From carpet to tile floors?
It will be, no, it's going to be carpet, but it's called carpet tile. So they are two foot by two foot, so if somebody spills, you pull one tile up. You don't have to replace the commercial tile. You don't have to replace the whole, right now it's roll carpet. I can't, I can't fix it, I mean, I have to tear it all up. So this is a way with a rental facility, we, we can, you know, have some extra carpet tile and keep it from looking as dingy as it looks right now.
I thought you was putting tiles so we could two-step a little bit. You know how to do that?
Any, any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. Six E.
Resolution number 23-11, accepting certificate of substantial completion for the T-Buy wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades, updates project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Goncalo. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, it looks like they only have a few items left.
It's not much, it's not much, they did a good job. All right, then, I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
I should ask a question. Vince is in the back.
Thank you very much. Six F.
Resolution number 23-12, declaring the intention of the mayor and city council of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, the city to issue sewer revenue bonds, DEQ, in the name of the city in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and a second by, was it, Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed? It was a close one. Yeah, this is our low-interest money with the $12 million that we're spending on sewer. This gives us a cheap way to make sure that we have enough because it's so much work. And we'll also leave some tax dollars in our nineteen sixty account that we were basically pledging most of it because we have so much sewer work. Any questions or comments?
Sorry, how long is the bond for again?
Uh, Vince, the bond's ten years, huh?
You catching me on board? It's at least ten if not.
Yeah, sometimes it's fifteen. It's either ten or fifteen years.
Okay. Do we have a date for a groundbreaking, uh, in Arcadian Acres?
Vince, you want to address that one? Yeah, we did. We got the five big.
I think I sent you an email on that a while back. Uh, that's still on track. You know, they're ordering pipe, uh, and pumps. The pumps are taking a while to, to manufacture.
Yeah.
But I think they're still on track. What was it? I told you, I think March, into March, something like that. Can't remember what I said.
July for some reason.
It was July.
July. Does that sound familiar?
Uh, that's when they're going to start to lay the pipe.
Okay.
And the pumps would come thereafter.
Okay, so it's still on track for that.
As far as I'm, I know, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's coming, Brooke.
It's coming, Brooke, a problem.
Slowly.
You gonna put a hard hat on?
No.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Six, uh, six G.
Accepting change order number one for the ARPA project entitled purchase and installation of oil and water separator, wash rack canopy, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed. This item, we, it was under budget and we are adding liner panels, which is just a metal panel on the inside of the wash rack. Because when they wash equipment, that's greasy and grimy. All that's going to fly on the building and get stuck in the pearlins and the Z's and the C's and be a mess. So we had enough money and the engineer said, I rarely ever put one up. You need to have a slick panel on the inside so you can clean it because they're going to come and inspect. We never had one before, okay? And we're supposed to. Now that we have one, they're going to come and inspect it. When they come and inspect it, he said, it's supposed to be clean. So we had enough money to do it, so we're going to add the metal panels on the inside.
Okay.
Any discussion? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you. Six H.
Resolution number twenty-three dash fourteen, accepting change order number one for the city park and West End Community Center improvements, fifty dash M L one dash twenty dash O two project and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mayor Protimore Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. Uh, Paul, tell us about this one.
Sure, um, so this is the roofing projects and Lloyd's in the back and Lloyd's been very helpful through this whole process of monitoring what's going on with the construction. Uh, they've had delays due to materials. They've had a lot of delays due to weather. And so what it is, is this roofing projects, and so we've got a couple of different scopes of work. We, the, the way the project was established is that the upper level components of all the roofs need to be taken care of first. But we didn't want to touch the existing lower level roofs, which are in good shape, but still need to be painted and coated. That's the last thing to be done. So they've been working with the issues of the weather, uh, and making sure all the panel systems are properly sealed. Um, a lot of the leaks have dissipated. Uh, Lloyd's been monitoring the leaks for us and we've been noticing and addressing those with the contractor. Uh, but I think most of the leaks have been taken care of, I believe, right Lloyd?
Man's.
Yeah, we're working on them, but.
Yeah, because.
We haven't accepted the project and, um.
Yeah, because I, I'm at West End three days a week and every week af- every day after it rains, we have puddles.
On the teen side.
On the teen side, but there's also a side, there's a, like, right outside of the meeting room, we have water on the floor there as well.
Right, so the teen side has a, a opening in the roof, which is where some old air conditioning equipment was. And we're calling for all those panels to be replaced to cover that opening back up again and they, they, I understand that they have the panels to be installed to be able to do that. So that should go away.
Okay, because we have an architect who actually plays pickleball with us and she mentioned that we need to check that the mold because of how long it's been raining in there, so.
Well, that's going to get remodeled, which is a good thing. She's not wrong. That's getting remodeled for the Boys and Girls Club, so all that ceiling's coming out.
Okay.
Which is a good thing because you, you're not wrong. It has been leaking for years.
Yeah.
So once they fix the roof that the panels are now in, we're about to, they haven't gone to the fire marshal yet, but I know that, I saw the preliminaries. They're working and Boys and Girls Club signed off on the drawings, I want to say last week. So they're finishing the drawings, going to the fire marshal, then that'll, God forbid, but all that ceiling is going to be replaced.
So all those surfaces should be replaced.
In other words, the insulation and the ceiling, the only two areas between it and the roof that you could have mold. Both of those are going to be replaced so that we won't have a mold issue.
After we, after we seal it so we don't have water coming in at all.
Yeah, they're going to change the panels of the roof.
It's a lot of water.
Oh, no, they're going to, it's because they got a hole up there. They're going to change the panels of the roof first. Then Boys and Girls Club contractor will come in, they'll remove the seal and remove the insulation.
Okay, I just.
And also while it's open, I'll be able to really make sure that it doesn't leak.
Right.
Because you better look up and see it.
Okay, well, I'll know.
But your architect wasn't wrong because that really could be an issue.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank you.
Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Man, get some more. I am, I'm almost out. Six I. Sorry, Mr. Broussard, Councilman Broussard.
Resolution number twenty-three dash fifteen, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute professional services contract with M and E Consulting Incorporated for the T-BY-U wastewater treatment plant improvements project as authorized by supplemental agreement, supplemental intergovernmental agreement bind between the city of New Iberia and Iberia Parish Sewer District Number One.
And before we, uh, make a motion, you'll see that we didn't say Zoma Xabo. We already have a contract with them. So we didn't need a new contract, but we need a contract with M and E. That's why we didn't read off Zoma Xabo, it's only M and E. So with that, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
So what's the total for the project? I mean, it's two hundred sixty-six thousand for engineering fees, so is this ten percent? What's the total?
Yes, ma'am, ten percent, two point five million.
Okay.
And it's one of our sewer improvements that we budgeted with our twelve million dollars.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Is any others part of the city getting sewer work? I mean, a lot of this is happening in District One and I know they need it. But there's some needs in other ar- other areas of the city.
Well, we're reflowing and Vince, why don't you come up because when we do the reflow, it's not only Arcadian Acres, it goes across the bay and affects some of the other side of the bay. And what else are we doing that affects other areas of the city?
So this right here is, is two point six million dollars that was awarded to Iberia Parish Sewer District. This is part of the ARPA, uh, WS one water sector round one monies, right? So they received five million dollars, agreed to put two and a half million of that into our commonly owned T-BYU plant, right? So this money's being spent there. Um.
On my Cotton Street.
Cotton Street, right, right. Um, the city, uh, we weren't successful in that round of, of applications, but we were successful in the second round. So we're going to have another five million dollars. Uh, most of that will be spent inside this, uh, Sucrose Drive plant, uh, as well. But we do have other projects, uh, throughout the city, uh, that, that we're doing flow rerouting projects to take, take some loads off of uh, the inside Basin B area and get that flow to Sucrose Drive. That kind of corresponds with the project that, that Brooke has gone on. So those two projects, uh, are going to, are going to affect Arcadian Acres area, Basin B, and actually the plant. We're taking more flow off of the T-BYU plant, which will give us more capacity on that end of town. So it, it, we're really kind of reaching out across the whole city.
And a lot of money's going to the whole sewer system by reworking the headworks and reworking the plant. There's a lot of money, you know, that we all, every district uses.
Um, this, this flow.
I just, I know I have a few areas where people complain about it as well. It's just not as many people as, as Brooke.
You're going to see some work on Hopkins Street pretty soon, uh, rehabbing.
What about like Cherokee and all of those streets and street that, I mean, I get complaints on those areas as well.
Pretty wrong.
Um, we've, we've done a bunch of work there in the past, prior, prior to your tenure here. Uh, we did a bunch of rehab, uh, in the Cherokee Street area, uh, recently. So I would imagine after all the ARPA projects slow down and, and the LCDBG projects kick up again, you're going to see, uh, our consultants are going to look at what was done most recently and what needs to be addressed again in those areas will receive some funding.
Okay.
You, we, you have to kind of spread it around. Uh, the state's going to look at, hey, they just got money last year, the year before, right? So the consultants take all that into account when they put the applications in.
So the CBDG money, did I say it right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I mean. Thanks, Marla. Um, so the, that money, the block grant money, um, I know some of that's being spent across the bay because they did some special formula. But isn't it, I mean, that money should be spent in lower income areas and I, I just want to make sure because some of their issues haven't been addressed.
It, it is correct. I mean, I wish we could do it all at once, but you can't, right? Um, the grant funds are limited when you apply. Uh, if you ask for too much, you never get. If you don't ask for enough, you don't get it, right? So the consultants have their, their fingers on that pulse.
Okay.
And get us the most they can when they get it. Um, so yes, uh, those areas will see more money, you know, no, no two ways about it.
All right, thanks. Appreciate that.
Ma'am? Thank you, Vince. Um, then please vote your machines. All right, seven A.
Ordinance number twenty-two thirty-three dash oh five, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles a surplus and further authorizing the sale of same to a local police department at a cost not less than twenty-three thousand dollars in accordance with state law and setting for public hearing on March seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer. Is there any discussion on this one? Kind of already did.
So are we getting rid of all of our two thousand eighteen?
Not all of them because can't afford to swap them all out, but, uh, the two charges, we, we were not utilizing and they weren't that efficient. So we wanted to get rid of them and get units. Uh, and then we're keeping the best of the best of the eighteens and we are, we rotated some out last year. We're doing some this year. We'll probably do a little less next year and then we'll hit it hard the following year. So we took the number of cars, who had been wrecked, who had some issue from the, you know, every once in a while you get a car out of that many cars that always had a problem. So we kind of separated those out of the herd, started selling what we could sell and we were very fortunate that people need cars right now and they're hard to get. So we got good money for our cars and so we're just rotating the, we're doing what other administrations didn't do that we ended up with twenty, everybody in the fleet of, had a twenty-year-old truck. You know, or like all our fire trucks were twenty-eight years old. So I never want to get us into that position. So we are just rotating, you know, some each year.
Okay.
And more some years than other years. Like I ca- I had to stage it because I know that we can't afford, we need other things.
Right.
So we're just kind of playing the game that last year was a lot, this year is somewhere in the middle, next year we'll probably rotate less.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven B.
Special ordinance number twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-three dash ten, amendment number nine, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect adjustment for Founders Park and setting for public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Marla Lewis. This is the little project in the front that recognizes Haiti, Belgium, Al- Alawina Torres in Spain. And I can't remember the city in France, but the four cities that we twin with. I don't know why, we had thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget and then Kevin did the budget, we approved the budget and he chopped us out of ten grand. So we ended up with twenty-five thousand. So it took a little bit of a debate to, to, to get to my buddy and say, where's the money we, and we budgeted the project? So we're adding the ten thousand back that we approved, that he, that he didn't give us.
Okay.
And that project is going well. All the sidewalks poured. The next thing is to pour the markers. We need to get at least a marker for Spain done in the next month because they're shipping the tile, uh, sometime at the end of the month that they're donating. And then we have to have them installed because they're coming in April for the Spanish festival. So politicians, I think the mayor pro tem, maybe the mayor, but I think the mayor pro tem and some other Spanish politicians from the town we're twin with, Alawina Torres, where all the Seguros Ramirez, I won't name all the families, but the seven original families came from. So they're coming, so they expect to see something. So we're a little bit under the gun to get at least that one done.
Right.
And then I'm reaching out to the town in Haiti, to the town in France and the one in Belgium to see if we can develop a relationship again with them because the one from, uh, France sends me a letter every once in a while. I've never heard from the town in Haiti, so I have someone who's going to help me try to make those connections because I think it would be neat to have something from each one of those, those towns in that little area.
Yeah.
Just to recognize that we had twin with them. It's part of our history. Me, questions, comments? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Seven C.
Special ordinance number twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-three dash eleven, amendment number ten, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect the sale of four police units and a portion applicable expenses and setting for public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protimore Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. And just to explain, this will generate eighty-eight thousand dollars. This eighty-eight thousand dollars was considered in the budget. That'll give us money to rig up some of the new cars and the only other thing we're doing besides cars, the front building is, in the back of the building is very dark. They aren't cameras and they aren't lights in the back of the Cliff Oakland Building. Uh, many years ago, they had an incident there that you, you, we don't know what happened. So what we are doing is adding lights and cameras back there. Uh, one, it's good security. Number two, if ever there's an incident, if anything ever happened, we, we would be able to illumi- that area would be illuminated, we'd be able to see. So most of the money is going for equipment for the cars, but about, I think, twenty thousand dollars is going to put cameras and lights back there. Is there any discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. We bumped, uh, finance reports because Kevin is at a conference, so he will bring that exciting news to our next meeting.
You're a skipper.
Well, you know how he is. Uh, so now we have. Yes, ma'am, I know. I just give my own self-m measuring. Uh, nine A, Jimmy. This is a discussion and what we're preempting some action, okay? This is to say, go pick up your signs because if not.
Well, we've been getting a lot of calls about all the signs at the street corners, telephone poles, right of ways and things like that. I saw this today and I just said, I gotta take that picture. Where does that go? Well, with all the rain we fixing to get.
Yep.
They head straight to the drainage. So I'm going to give them till right after Mardi Gras, twenty-second, twenty-third. I'm going to start picking signs up. So this is to give people an opportunity that they can go and get their signs. Is, that was, that was on the same corner, so these are going to be down in another week or two. On a telephone pole? We got, it's in the ordinance, you can't nail to a telephone pole, so.
There's some right there on center, too.
Oh, they're all over.
They're everywhere.
Center right, but then you get to Maine.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. And then we're about to have an election come up for Parish, yeah.
And then you're going to start having political signs.
Yep.
That's across the street. There's three more on that pole.
Uh, Jimmy, can you clarify with the public about there's a difference between businesses having signs on their property opposed to something like this?
Yeah, this is an off-site sign, off-premise sign.
Okay.
And they're illegal anywhere unless it's on the property of your business.
Okay.
That's, and then we have permits.
I just don't want the public being confused, well, I can't put one of those signs in.
You can put it on your business, on your property business.
Right.
Business property. But you can't put it at your house. There's a whole set of restrictions in the zoning code for signs.
Now, what about political signs, like the yard signs for, uh?
Ah, I can't touch those.
Can't touch those, huh?
Cannot touch political signs.
All right.
That, I got some litter there, but in the background, you can see there's another sign that's on the ground. See across the street on the pole?
Yep.
That's a bed and breakfast sign in a residential district. There's some more signs on the poles. I was kind of careful. I didn't want to get people's names on the signs, but that's it. So right after Mardi Gras, we're going to start picking up signs. So you have to, people have the opportunity to go get their signs.
Bad enough for me, your truck?
So we have political signs that are up from the last election, last year, that are still hanging around the city. So you mean to tell me you can't move those signs? The election's over?
Not political.
Oh, my goodness. Remember the ones we talked about?
Oh, yeah. We would have to get in touch with those people for them to come get them or whoever they had in this area. I know there's a couple from the, uh.
Yeah, the judge race.
Judges' race.
Yeah.
I've seen around.
They got elected and they didn't care. They left their signs.
Or they lost and they left their signs, yeah.
Everywhere.
But we need to find out how to get in contact with them.
Okay.
So what is the course of action? You will pick them up if they're not picked up within the week?
We're going to throw them away.
Okay, that's great.
They hid the dumpster.
Yeah, we're trying to tell people, come get your signs. And the point of this is, we've been getting so many complaints. I said, Jimmy, between you and Public Works, we're going to have to pick them up. I mean, it doesn't, it's code and. And Jimmy said, why don't we, why don't we bring it to the public's attention in case people want to go reharvest their signs? But, you know, they can go on private property, but they can't go on all of our right of ways.
They can only go on where your business is located.
Yes.
On site.
Not your residence.
Will there ever be a citation for it?
Residential is the strictest area. The only signs in a residential is a realtor's sign, basically, and where there's construction.
So when someone has a job they're doing on a residence, a commercial business, whoever it is.
Okay, it's on that residence.
But it's not, but wait, the business is not located there.
But there's a construction site.
They got a permit and it's construction.
So they can, so if they get a permit, they can put that sign, okay?
That works on.
So my, my landscaper has a sign in my yard. He can't have that in my yard.
It's not supposed to be there.
Did he do landscaping?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can be there while he's working.
Because he did the landscaping.
Oh, okay.
It can be there while he's working, but he can't leave it there for six months.
No, but we're not going police that at state a few weeks after the jail. He, he got to have something to have a sign to show somebody. You know, but yeah, as long as he did work there.
Yeah, he does work there.
Put a sign that advertises what he does. Just can't be there all the time.
And Iberia Parish School System had one in my yard, so I got to tell them I can't put it up anymore.
What is that? I saw that about this.
Um.
Head start or something? What is that?
No, it, it was that, that and then there's, um, what was the other one? They had another one about, I guess they made some, they met some level and so they got honored by the state for something. And so they had signs around the city and they put one in my yard. It's done right now because I was getting my grass cut.
I have a question. Are you going to keep track of the different businesses and if they're repeat offenders, like if they already, no?
I, I chucked.
So no citations or anything? They could just keep on sticking up signs?
Here's another thing, we'll know fine.
It gets costly, yes. It gets costly.
Yeah.
So they ought to know.
Okay.
It, it gets very costly.
No, we all know what signs cost.
They, yeah, if they take those signs and put that money on a billboard, they get more.
Yeah, one more and I'm done because it's late. If like, for example, the, uh, they have some schools put their signs out and stuff like that, could we possibly give them a courtesy instead of just taking the signs out, especially the school board or school for schools? And letting them know that we have, this is what's going on.
If they, if they contact us, but they don't ever contact us.
They don't contact us? So if you have a school sign promoting something for that school, for the school board, instead of going rip that sign.
As long as it's in their yard, closer to the house.
We should be.
Yeah, but if it's close to the right of way.
So we're not going to be the, the sign Nazi. We just, we're trying to clean up our town, in other words.
Biggest thing is the right of way and the poles.
Yeah, let's not get crazy with this. To me, it's in the right of way, if it's on the wrong side of the sidewalk, if it's on the city side. To me, it's in the right of way, if it's on the wrong side of the sidewalk, if it's on the city side, or it's on a corner.
Or it's on the pole.
Or it's on a pole, that's what, that's what we're going at.
Stop signs.
I mean, we do live in America, I'm not trying to get too crazy with this.
Nazi, like the soup Nazi.
I used to, I don't anymore. I ain't got time to.
That's what I was at, sending a courtesy call.
The city's getting ready to have an anti-violence program and yard signs are part of it. But if they're by a house and in the yard.
If they're approved by the mayor.
You know, I mean, we should be able to do that because that's gonna be a citywide thing.
It says that in ordinance, if it's approved by the mayor.
That's a citywide initiative, that there's gonna be yard signs coming throughout, there, there's a whole lot of stuff.
That's good, they're coming with the political signs.
Through the whole time, it's not political, it's, it's, uh, it's just, it's anti-violence.
Yeah.
Okay, don't pick those up.
There'll be some violence.
Well, I mean, the city's careful, yeah? Good, thank you.
Might be a little violent.
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate it.
No, I think we need, and Jimmy was right, I was ready to just start picking them up. And Jimmy, which is very unusual. Jimmy said, whoa, wait a minute, why don't we be nice and, and let me come to the meeting and put it up there? And so I thought it was a very good idea, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
That is nice.
I'm not all bad.
No, you're not.
And to those, what do they call them, campaign managers, the people who run those campaigns, go get y'all signs.
Exactly.
Go get y'all signs, y'all come now, community expound votes and leave y'all signs, go get y'all signs.
Agreed.
I agree.
Councilman's remarks, I'm gonna start on Councilman Swir's side tonight.
One of my favorite times of the year is coming up. Can y'all guess?
Yeah. I'll tell you now.
It's coming up, March, I, I know Lloyd's in the room right here, so.
March Madness?
March.
Festival of the Liveo.
Eighteenth?
Oh.
Eighteenth. So that's coming up, so contact the park about getting signed up for the barbecue cook-off. And I'm sure we still have, uh, the junior cook-off, which James Strong takes care of that. So that's another good thing that we, the last year was actually a good turnout. So this year will be our first year without Pat, so kind of bittersweet, but we're gonna keep it going, you know, keep, keep it up for him. That was his puppy, was the barbecue cook-off. So he loves sampling everybody's stuff, even though it's full. But no, uh, I'm just asking for everybody to come out and support it. It's, you know, it's for the, the better of our community, for our parks and stuff like that, so we just appreciate it, any support we can get. And if y'all need anything, like I said, call, call up the parks and they'll give you all the information with the packet, anything y'all need. So thank you, that's it for tonight.
Yes, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first I'd like to thank everyone who came out to the homebuyer seminar we had last week. I hope you found the information helpful. We're gonna have a homebuyer training class and you'll get a certificate at the end so that you can take that certificate and go to a bank and show that you've already taken the, the training. So that's a good thing. Also, I'd like to tell everybody that, um, we're gonna have a community baby shower on March twenty-fifth at the Slaman Theater, it's gonna start at ten o'clock and we're gonna have some. I said community, not for me. I'm gonna hit you with this pencil. That would be a miracle, like the Virgin Mary miracle.
Tell us about that.
Okay, so, um, you know, and it's really to get some information out, we're gonna have some vendors there and everything. So it's, we're hoping that everybody will come out, get some free stuff, and then also to learn some things about, um, you know, how to take care of themselves. There'll be some vendors out there to give you some information. And then.
On that note, do you call the pregnancy center, they'll be, they'll step up to help you?
Uh, yeah, actually, you know, I probably should call them because I work with them to, with the church to get money, you know, we donate money, so. Also, um, I want to say to all the constituents, but specifically District Five, if you guys are, you know, forgetting to put your trash can out at night and you miss the garbage man in the morning, please do not call City Hall and ask them, or tell them that Pelican missed your gra, your trash can and ask for them to come back. Because these guys are having to do the same route two and three times because people are calling in. And then we find out that when you look at the, the videos recorded by the cameras that are on the truck, your trash can wasn't out there. So we're not gonna start, we're not gonna keep sending them out there. You're gonna hold on to that trash for another week. So please, get your trash can out there the night before. Otherwise, you're gonna hold your trash for two weeks because we're not gonna keep sending them out. That's unfair to them for them to have to do the same route two or three times. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Well, uh, tonight, I want to say, uh, happy, uh, Black History Month.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I do, we have lots of activities going on around the town. And at least here in our area, we don't have problems with people trying to tamp down the history. You know, we, we, in our community, we celebrate all the history. And that's the way it should be. We should not be, uh, trying to, well, kind of keep certain things hidden from, from children, students. You know, education is education and it should be something that triggers thought, you know? So if you only have one thing that's, that's given to, you know, to, for you to think about, then you're missing out on a whole lot of other things. So I'm just saying that, um, let's celebrate Black History Month as a whole and, um, just the books that are being, um, you know, I can't get over that, uh, freedom of speech and the Second Amendment, it's kind of like, you know, the main things these days. But, um, you know, everything is Second Amendment, but then you're cutting out other freedoms from specific people. And that is not what our country was founded on. That's not what our constitution is about either. So you can't just streamline the, the constitution to what you want it to be. It's a one nation under God. So let us keep it like that. And for those people who are in stakes where they can't have certain books because they're about LGBTQ people or black people, you know, let's all keep an open mind and, um, just do what is right, that, what is Christian. Because people claim to be Christian and the Lord said, you know, we all built, all were made in his image. No matter how you look, what color you are and all. And we need to celebrate everybody's culture and everybody's history. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would just, um, like to start off, like to give a shout out to the Bayou Mardi Gras Association. I wasn't in town, but I heard it was the biggest crowd in the city they have ever seen.
It was like a Shuriken basketball parade, it was huge.
Every, uh, they said everything went off right, the city cleaned up the streets behind, it was perfect, good crowd, no problem. So, you know, more of these events brings the community together, so I was super excited to hear that news. So unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but, uh, I heard a lot of good reports. Second of all, Ms. Reed, I had a chance to attend a couple of the basketball games that the NBA leaped, and I was impressed. I'm getting kids calling me and saying, we're just having fun. I went to one senior high in the west end, and I said, man, they are really, kids are smiles on their face, some really good athletes, really. And a well-run, and I'm excited. So hopefully, they come back and do, you know, more next year, I think that's a great program.
Awesome.
And, uh, so, yeah, so I had the chance to do that. And, um, also, uh, just, uh, you know, looking at the city from a whole, and, uh, things are going good and we're making some good decisions. And like Ms. Lebeda said, we disagree on some things, but I think, uh, at the end of the day, we're all thinking for our constituents and what's best for them. And I'm proud of this council for making those decisions.
Council Bruce.
I will be addressing the parish council tomorrow night's meeting. It's on the agenda for asking legal, legal is holding us up. Parish did their work. Parish president did their work. Mayor, I hope we're doing our work to get the lights and arms at our railroad tracks. So legal's holding it up, we're gonna address them tomorrow night, and they better give us some good answers. Because they have a new man in charge of the railroad, and he's telling me that's the biggest holdup they have left to do all the railroad track down the middle of town. And complete the legal work for the acquisition of property for installation of control boxes for safety arms and warning lights at Iberia Street, Julia Street, French Weeks. And let's not forget, we want to put a Carolina if we can, Ms. Deidre, in Providence. We don't want to close any crossings, we said that many a times, nobody on this council. So it's getting close to, it's, it's been a hard travel. You can't believe how hard it is to get these people to move, and I sure want legal to move. But, uh, remember, the city council does not want to close, you already said that, we need to be proactive. We cannot wait for an accident to happen and then react. Deidre, you have two locations, Deer Street and Evazin. We have brand new arms and lights, we hoping to put somebody Carolina. Ms. DeeDee, you got a bank, how many accidents we had at bank? They have arms and lights at bank now.
You're right.
And you have that Corin on the other end.
Yep.
We hoping Providence gets them, you know? So things are happening and I hope y'all all support this. We got a Dracel Verrett, brand new railroad man. Mr. De, DeCord, I think you have the phone number and everything, be in contact, please.
Shoesbury retired?
You know, yeah, no, that's the railroad man, Dracel Verrett.
Oh, I see.
Yes, just Shoesbury, I've been on his BUT too. But, uh, that's all, I'm on him every week now. And, uh, they, they, they don't like me at all, so, but, uh, I'm gonna do it for the people. Twenty, twenty years, I'll be on one in two weeks, I'll miss our next meeting. But they'll, they'll have a break. But I just want to make sure y'all understand, anything we can do to push this and get it out the wing. We have them over the hill, let's keep them pushing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on February the twenty-fifth, um, the new Iberia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority will be doing a free community health fair. It's, uh, in the West End Park from ten AM to one PM, uh, Western Park. February twenty-fifth, Community Health Fair, Delta, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Also, um, the Ro Omnicron Chapter of Omega Psi Phi will be doing a neighborhood cleanup this weekend on Hopkins Street. Just, you know, they, they kind of doing it themselves, but I'll, we'll be out there to support them, um, on Saturday. And, uh, you know, in, in honor of Black History Month, man, I just always like to give a brief history. It was started in nineteen-twenty-six as Black History Week by Carter G. Woodson. And in nineteen-seventy-six, it became Black History Month, you know? And, uh, I think from, from then till now, we've had a lot of challenges. Being born black in America is, is, it's been a challenge. And, um, you know, all we ever want was equal rights, you know, uh, no more redlining, uh, opportunities to buy homes, opportunities to have safe and fair schools, uh, things of that sort. We want the same thing that everybody else want. You know, and all black history is, is a, is, is an awareness of the, of the accomplishments and the contributions that black people have made to the United States, black and, and African-American. The reason why I say I separate the two because, you know, I wasn't born in Africa. My roots may have been in Africa, but I was born black in America. You know, however, my, my descendants were from Africa, so they were African-American. But, you know, being black in America, it has its challenges, but it also, it, it, it strengthens me to, 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 to just want to do more in my community, you know? When I face these challenges, man, and it's, uh, it's, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it no other, no other way, you know? I watched some black history movies this morning, you know, it's just, it's just who I am, you know?
Got you excited.
You know, yeah, got me excited, man. But, uh, you know, it's not about ostracizing anybody and lifting one over the other. It's just, uh, bringing awareness to a group of people that have been, uh, left behind in a lot of areas, you know? And, uh, it was sad that we only do it for a month, but, uh, I shine, I shine three sixty-five, you know, and I'm trying to pass that on. Yeah, that's all I am.
You glow, you glow now.
Thank you.
One of these days, it hopefully will be incorporated into American history so we don't need it.
Okay, uh.
For Mark.
So Mr. Chastigar has been here for three hours now, you want to wave and let him know that that's you? He and his wife Nicole own Millside Market. And they, I don't know if you guys went in that room right there, gave us four king cakes, just to let y'all know. And they're gonna be amazing.
Going in there.
Oh, yeah, that's why we're, it's not bathroom breaks, they want to go eat, no. So thank you so much for doing that, I appreciate it. You and Nicole were just really great to us and our community, and we appreciate you guys. Also, I want to thank the mayor and NIPD for coming to help with the litter pickup with the Dasbit Elementary students. They really enjoyed that, they worked hand in hand picking up the trash on Dasbit Road, so that was nice to see. Um, also, Acadian Acres will be getting a little free pantry soon, uh, thanks to my son and my husband. They worked together on a beta project and built one. So, uh, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have it up at the Santiago Park. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one more thing, just, I wanted to tell you that, and Marla hit a, hit a little tune there. You know, jobs, opportunity is all important to the community. Currently Turner Industries is in the process of hiring three hundred and fifty people, gonna be five hundred. They are looking to do job fairs.
That's right.
Invest in, and I think they talking about resume, some resume writing.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Trying, trying to work through you on that, that's, they told me they were talking to you.
Yeah, actually, I, I asked for this and so there, well, Marla and I asked initially. And so, um, we, I told him, if he could give me a date, I actually contacted him today, saying, still waiting on the date. Because when we get the date, then I'm gonna offer some classes in resume writing and interviewing because, I mean, I have a business background, I, I.
So the date's coming, it's coming, it's, I heard it's pretty close.
Craig told me that he's gonna call, go back to him to get the date.
So just, which is what you said, jobs, opportunity, strengthen the community, you know? Their opportunity is gonna be there to go to work and, and give back to our community, and I think it's gonna be more than three fifty. So, you know, the opportunity is gonna be there for a lot of our constituents to go to work and, and have the opportunity to, you know, succeed in America.
Right, I mean, when you have jobs in the community, then people bring the money back home, they can actually have better homes, they can feed their children better.
It's a building block.
Exactly, it's what we want, that's all we're looking for, is a fair shake.
That's all I can say.
Great, I got one remark, I'm making eighty thousand dollars, not a hundred, I don't talk smack. And I'd like a motion to adjourn. Thank you.